All right. Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under one God. In the name of the Lord. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. 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 Amen.[148.41]
...meeting and they came back and they said absolutely, let's do a coalition. At the same time, we were all saying, let's do a coalition because we know that is the most effective way of making change. So, thanks to the four side of people in the room who said, we want to be bold and we want to be part of this study. So, they do the study. It was administered both in 2014 and 2016. In your particular school in 2016, you had 344 students participate in their survey. The survey did take place in the fall and we studied the kids seventh through the 12th grade. Oftentimes, when we get study results, one of the first things we hear is, oh, the kids lied. Well, I have to share with you that there are actually protective factors put in the survey tool which will begin to, if a kid, there's actually, don't listen to this, you guys, there's actually a false drug in there. And if a kid checks that they took that false drug, that test gets put out of the pile. They don't even put it into part of the survey. If a kid said, yes, 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 to everything, they actually dismiss that one as well because oftentimes, kids aren't doing all 100% of the substances that are listed. So, there really are a lot of protective factors. The other thing we want, always like to let folks know is that the trends of use match actually the trends in the data lines across the country. So, if San Harbor kids lied, that meant they had to call up the kids in Iowa and say, lie on the test and do this, and they had to call up the kids in California, and they had to really network. And they're really smart and they're really good, I don't think they can network and change a national study when it comes to this. So, with that, so, bad information is ruled out, but let's talk about what is in there. And here's where it comes to you guys. So, one of the things, the core measures that we like to use is 30-day, 30-day use. And we know that if a young person has done something within 30 days, the likelihood that they will do that again is pretty darned good. And so, for your kids, for example, when you take your eighth grade kids, your eighth grade kids drink and drug less than they do than the national norm. You should be so proud of your eighth grade. This is actually quite true across Suffolk County. We know in Suffolk County, in New York State, as a matter of fact, we do a brilliant job with our eighth grade. The challenge is, is when they get to that 10th grade. And that's when you start to see a big change in numbers. So, 30-day use of alcohol, 9% of your eighth graders report using 30 days within the last 30 days. In 10th grade, that number jumps to 50%. That's half of your population drank within the last 30 days. Sadly, by the time you hit their senior year, those numbers jumped to 73%. Now, this was done in the fall, so you can think about all the different activities that happened in fall that could have led to what encompassed the 30 days, right? We know that you do a brilliant job when it comes to cigarettes, absolute brilliant job. We actually do a great job across the state with nicotine. However, vaping is going to change that. And if you haven't seen vaping in your school and heard about it, my guess is, it's on its way knocking at the door any given day now because school districts across Suffolk County are absolutely in desperate measures when it comes to vaping. So, we know that you had nobody report smoking in the eighth grade, but you did have 7% in the 10th grade, and that number did jump to 29% in, once they hit 12th. Marijuana use, the same, you actually had 5% reporting use of marijuana in eighth grade. In the 10th grade, that jumped to 20%, that's a fifth of your population. And by the time they hit the senior year, you actually had 43% who were, who were reporting use. Prescription drugs, we know is a big predictor of opiates. It is the same kind of high. So, we know that oftentimes, folks will begin dabbling in a little marijuana, they'll do some drinking, they might do some vaping, but we know, once they start to get that chemical high of the opioids, it really begins to accelerate addiction in young people. And so, we don't ever want to see prescription drugs show up on any survey anywhere because we know that that's a big problem. Now, what happens with the prescription drugs and why this pertains to you guys is with prescription drugs, it generally is the 18 to 26-year-old population that winds up in trouble with the opiates. But make no mistake about addiction and make no mistake, people do not wake up one day and say, I want to, I want to be a drug addict and an alcoholic. They don't wake up one day and say, I'm going to start with heroin. It starts with those earlier drugs that we talked about 100% of the time. So, how do you guys compare to the national? Well, if you look on the gray side, you see San Harbor's number. That burgundy is the nation. The good, bad is that you are a tight, beautiful, wonderful community. These numbers, you excel. And these are not the numbers that you want to excel in. In some ways, you're in par with the rest of the county. I can pull up other schools who are very similar to you in their rates of use, but you can see that your alcohol use is greater, your marijuana use is greater. Again, your cigarettes, you did brilliantly in, so whatever's happening in your elementary school, talking about nicotine, you guys do such a great job with it. 10th graders, again, 50% of 10th graders report 30-day use in San Harbor where across the nation, they only, across the state, I'm sorry, no, these are the nation, national numbers, only 20%. Nicotine, 7% in your 10th graders and 5%. And you guys can see the trends in those charts. I don't need to go through piece by piece and going through those numbers for you. There's more, certainly more study tools and more information we have other than the 30-day use, but really wanting to make sure that we don't just come here and talk about what your alarming numbers are, let's start moving the conversation to what the heck are we going to do about it and talk about some great strategies that you already have in place. So, to that, lifetime use, again, those are big, big, big numbers. And lifetime use could have been, you know, they got drunk one night, but you do have 91% of your seniors reported that they, throughout their lifetime, they had, they had drank. 72% of your 10th graders, of course, 34% of your eighth graders. Cigarette use, again, tobacco use was much lower than, than other areas, and marijuana use is certainly quite up there and quite high. I don't know that too many people would be really surprised that we said 63% of 12th graders reporting at one point that they had smoked marijuana in their lifetime. What we want to focus on are those 37% that didn't. And how can we then turn around and begin to change that number from 37% and increase that number? And that's not something that's going to happen with any one magic bullet. It's going to take a very designed, comprehensive approach. So, again, nationally, you match up the same way. Your numbers are higher. No different than any other East End school, no different than any other East End community. There are very many, a lot of reasons why this happens in our communities out here, and I'm going to leave that up to the young people to talk to you about it. So, the question becomes like, what do you do, right? And so, you can't just say, well, just put this, you know, this one program in. It's not going to be one, one dimensional. What it is going to take is a very strategic approach, and that has seven different stages to it. First, you have to do honest assessment, and it's not just, not just the numbers from the survey tools, it's not just the, the actual surveys, it's how does this survey match up to Southampton Town Survey? How does that match up to the additional surveys that the school's doing? But more importantly, what are the kids telling us? And what are the parents telling us? And what are those other anecdotal information to put together this whole package? Because it's not just about the data numbers, it's about all those other things that support. So, the first thing you want to do is have a comprehensive assessment, which we've been in the process of assessment for quite some time here in San Harbor. Then, the next thing you want to do is you want to build capacity and bring people to the table. You guys have brilliantly done that. The DFC grant requires us to bring 12 sectors to the table. Many of you in this room are part of those 12 sectors. That means, as a parent, I might have one opinion and one vantage point, but it's also about listening to school and listening to law enforcement and listening to the business community and bringing everybody together to help design, design the right approach. But most importantly, having young people as part of that conversation. You can't do anything for them without them, and any adult group that ever sits down and designs stuff for young people without young people at the table is missing a vital, vital point because our programs are all youth-driven and youth-inspired, and these guys keep me on my toes, they are much smarter than I am. The next step you'll go to is a planning stage, and you guys are well into that planning stage. Through the Safe in San Harbor group, you have begun to design an action plan that lasts for, for five years. From there, you've seen some of the deliverables already, some of the things you've seen in your community, in your school, whether we've done the reversing the stigma out at Bay Street, whether we've supported Red Ribbon activities, those are the kinds of things that you want to see and part that we see happening in our planning stages. The implementation is actually getting to do it, and this was for the first time, because I know a lot of people sat around and said, the coalition's not doing nothing, it is not doing anything. And that was a valid assessment, right? And so, now you're starting to see the implementation starting to take place. You see all the different strategies in place, whether it's prescription take-backs, whether it's articles being written, whether it's PSAs, whether it's parent sessions, they're all starting to come and take shape. And then, we'll, we'll continue to take a look at what we're doing through further evaluation, not just of what we're doing, but taking, continuing to survey the young people. And the whole time we have to do this, we have to keep building cultural competence and understanding of one another. So, again, I know you don't want to hear from, from me, one of the things we were able to do because of our relationship with HUGS and the Long Island Teen Institute and these guys behind us, as well as our partnership with CADCA, which was Community Anti-Drug Coalitions of America, we were able to take 10 individuals to Atlanta, Georgia in July. So, these kids gave up work time, they gave up a cool, couple of cool days at the beach to go to Atlanta, work with other teens, and really begin to work and assess on your community. And so, although they are not here, all of them are not here tonight, these folks are, along with Danielle, who is our program coordinator for SAFE, and Alana Urbant Moreno, who works with the HUGS organization and served as their mentor and chaperone. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to these guys to share with you what they designed while they were there in Atlanta.
I feel like I have to clap, you did that all in one.
Would you like me to press the button?
I would love you.
There you go, press the button.
Thank you.
So, hi. In addition to the survey data that Kim just explained to us, we as Pearson students and youth walk in these halls also know that this problem exists, not just because of this data, but because we see it within our schools and within our community. Our peers are proud of and open about their alcohol use, they talk openly in public about it, where they got it from, where they were when they were using, what their consequences were for it, usually not that harsh of consequences. They post on social media about it, using apps like Instagram or Snapchat, to name the main two. There's also an issue of a abundance of misinformation and a lack of education about the effects and consequences of substance and alcohol use. This is an issue both with youth and with adults, though, as in, like, they will both deny that the effects of underage drinking exist. Adults will see it as a rite of passage from youth into adulthood because, oh, that's what I did when I was your age, and you have to test your limits before you go to college so you know what you can handle. Adults prefer to have youth drinking in their homes to supervise them, believing that that's safer somehow. These are ways, just a few ways in which youth and adults find methods to justify and showcase substance abuse within our community that we've noticed.
Thank you.
Can we ask questions during it? Because, well, we have students here.
We'll wait to the end, and then, any questions that we have for any of them.
Okay, you got it.
Okay, so, San Harbor, we have a population a little bit over 2,000 people year-round, and this will change during the summertime, of course, when we get a lot of tourists, since this is a tourist hotspot. We have events, like we have the music festivals, sometimes we'll have fans perform, we have the fairs during the summertime, we have occasional celebrities that come. And our, our median family income is a little bit over $100,000, and there are a lot of restaurants and shops in this town, but sometimes they're often too expensive to truly support a living off of. And we have 23 liquor licenses in downtown San Harbor alone, and the Hamptons party or the drinking culture here makes it difficult for someone our age to grow up and say, I, I want to step back and not take part in substance abuse or drinking.
Risk and protective factors are what influence behavioral health problems. So, what is a protective factor? Protective factor is one that will reduce the chances of certain problems occurring, while a risk factor is something that if present, it will increase the chances of problems occurring. According to the YDS data sheet conducted in 2016, the following protective factors are present in the lives of our peers. Opportunities for pro-social involvement in the school and community. There are many ways to get involved in clubs and activities at Pearson, like sports teams, the GSA, yearbook club, robotics, and many more. Rewards for pro-social involvement in the school. School sporting events and plays are attended by many faculty members and community members. The academic awards, local recognition ceremonies, and general community, community support helps us feel supported and appreciated for being active participants. To build on social skills, students get the opportunity to attend additional academic programs at BOSI's along with various school trips, giving students the ability to interact with other grades. Here are some risk factors reported by our peers. The favorable attitudes towards underage drinking. Like Hope said earlier, our community residents view underage drinking as a non-issue, a rite of passage, and even sometimes is encouraged by our peers and by our family members. Our peers also view alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs as easy to get, easy to get, they say it's available whenever they would want it, and easy to get from older friends, other family members, and peers. Family conflict and low commitment to school, these are things that exist in many other places and can become dangerous when combined with other risk factors like the first two.
Okay, so, over the summer, the six of us, Lucy's not here, and Alana, Danielle, and Kim, we went to CADCA over the summer in Georgia, and this was a youth initiative, youth-led, like adult, like, kind of hand-holding type of situation that we had here. And we learned a lot of things while we were there, for the four days we were. So, here are the few things that we did learn, that an individual can have an impact within their community. One of the most interesting things I found was when we were talking to other kids that were there, there's this one particular boy who was the only person for like five different communities within Chicago, and he had the exact same problems that we had. And I know that we keep saying, like, teens, but the youngest girl I think I met there was about 10 or 11 years old, and she was ready to make such an impact within your community, which I found incredibly inspiring as well, too. And as I said, we're not alone. There's other teens like us all over the country that are trying to deal with the same issues that San Harbor has. Within CADCA, we then learned about the different levels of government relating to national, state, and our local levels within San Harbor, and about the community resources that we can use in order to combat this problem. And as Kim said, we talked about the Strategic Prevention Framework, a scientific model for effecting change. And it's not completely confusing. The next thing that I think is incredibly important that we learned is that youth and adults can work together. One of the activities we had with Alana is that we did the pros and cons of working with youths and adults, and whether it's generational or lack of experience or ego or whatever, youth and adults should be at the table together to lead this conversation in order to combat this huge problem, like Kim said. And the next thing we learned was how to create our logic model.
So, we made our own logic model. Our logic model is a tool that has helped us map out our issues in our community while addressing them in an organized fashion. The problem that we are, are addressing is underage drinking in San Harbor. More than 50% of the youth from the YDS survey are accepting of underage drinking, and this is a huge problem. And as Kim mentioned earlier, the rates of underage drinking in San Harbor in one's lifetime is 7% to 25% higher than the national average. We chose two risk factors for this logic model and the two reasons for why underage drinking is such a problem in San Harbor. The first one is favorable and supportive attitudes toward underage drinking. The two conditions which we contribute, which contribute to these supportive attitudes are adult-supporting and allowing underage youth to drink. In a 2016 Pearson High School focus group, a participant identified that a peer of theirs had been given a bottle of alcohol to take to a party, specifically vodka. The second was that parents are not providing consequences for their kids drinking alcohol. Half of our peers when reported, half of our peers had reported that they received marginal consequences for the alcohol use when discovered by the parents.
Our second risk factor contributing to this problem of underage drinking in San Harbor is how alcohol is accessible to youth. The first condition which contributes to this risk factor is that youths are taking alcohol from home without parental or guardian permission. 14% of youth who are drinking report taking it from their own home without parental permission. This may not seem like an incredibly high number, but it was one of the highest indicated ways our peers reported getting their alcohol. The second condition is that youths are also getting alcohol from their peers. 19% of youth who are drinking report that they got it from someone under 21. This suggests that it's most likely someone they know, like a friend, a sibling, or a classmate, someone they are connected to. Favorable attitudes and accessibility, these two risk factors are certainly not the only two risk factors affecting the underage drinking problem in San Harbor, but they are two major ones that we've identified.
So, after creating this logic model, the next thing we focused on was strategies to create change within San Harbor. So, here are a few examples that we created. The first one would be a community forum and workshops within San Harbor, and this would specifically be geared towards educating our peers and adults in San Harbor about the data that we got in the YS survey for Pearson Middle School and High School students. We want to make sure that also many parents know about the social post laws and the consequences regarding them as well as kids. The next idea we had was a sticker shock and a two-will-do. So, a sticker shock is pretty much when you make stickers and we place them with alcohol products throughout stores, acting as warning labels to inform the public of the consequences they can face for providing or purchasing alcohol for minors. And the two-will-do would encourage stores to ask for two forms of ID to cut down on the number of fake IDs used by underage youth to purchase alcohol. And the last idea we had was campaigns that bring public awareness within our community, specifically geared towards underage drinking and anti-drugs. So, one of the things we could do would be a PSA, or on Parent Portal, I know we were talking about how we could make a little picture or a little cartoon on Parent Portal, since we all check it pretty much every week about my grades, I mean, come on, I'm in IB, like, I have to. So, that would be there as well. So, yeah, one of the biggest risk factors we said was underage drinking, and we need to work to change these social norms and these community norms and not just the ideas that teens have within their idea of drinking.
Can you give them a round of applause, please? A lot of them were hanging out by poolside in Atlanta, not one of them. They were working. As a matter of fact, out of the 2,000 people that were at this mid-year training institute, 300-plus were, were young people, and they, from the Dakotas to California to Florida, they represented all different parts, to all different cultures, all different sized communities. So, what are we doing and what's working? Well, actually, I have to say, here's the good, 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 good news. Your school is so ahead of the curve. As a matter of fact, what I want you to know, even though the numbers are high, the fact that you engaged in this process and this conversation a long time ago really has paid off to your benefit. You have a whole wellness campaign moving forward in your school, and this has everything to do with this conversation. One of the things that the Fed, the federal government loves to brag about, San Harbor, our project officer loves to talk about the fact that she got to meet the school superintendent when she was here, and the school superintendent is part of every meeting. I have to tell you, that is not true in other parts of these processes. The superintendent really assigns 10 other people to deal with it and is not present in part of the dialogue. So, hats off to San Harbor for making sure that that happens. I also want to tell you, that day, they video-streamed in Dr. Richard Baum, who was the acting director at the time of the Office of National Drug Control Policy, which answers to the White House. And your very own, Hope Brindle, got up in front of the whole crowd and the whole audience and took him on in conversation. Because as the national conversation was all about opiates, what Hope very eloquently said is, we get that we need to be talking about opiates, that's a bad deal, but what are we doing about underage drinking? And what are we doing about those gateway drugs? Because if we don't talk about where addiction begins, we're going to continue to be in trouble looking at where it ends. So, so just so you know, your girl got up, and I hope that you guys have seen some of those videos, because it was certainly a proud moment. The other things that we want to encourage all families to do and all schools to do is that this isn't just a school problem to fix, and it's not just a community. Oftentimes, they'll point the finger to the school and say, the school's not doing enough. I can tell you from a professional opinion, your school's doing a whole lot more than what I think a lot of people understand. So, setting ground rules and consequences, asking children where they're going, sitting down and having dinner, separate coolers at your, at your parties, one, one party a year without the use of alcohol, all the different protective factors and wellness health strategies you can begin, that parents can begin to implore with their young, and show and model their own behavior. So, with that, I really, I know we've taken up a lot of time, and I really respect all that, and I knew you have some questions, so have at it. What do you guys want to know from this group? And, oh, and by the way, it ain't easy standing up and saying, first of all, to a room full of adults, but also standing up amongst your peers and saying, you know what, I choose to be drug and alcohol-free, and I'm going to stand for something. They deserve a medal just for doing that. So, one more round of applause.
Yeah, I don't know if it was a question in this survey, so if it's not, then maybe it's just anecdotally from the, from the students, and they're all fabulous, I'm wildly impressed, is where is this drug and alcohol use occurring? Is it occurring at night at parties? Is it occurring before kids show up at school? Is it occurring in the bathroom? Is it like everywhere, depending on who the child is? Just, I'm just looking for a little bit of a layer of information there.
I think I hear almost, I hear about parties, I hear about certain bathrooms within the school. I know we've had a few incidents in the past, yeah, mostly parties at home, like with their parents. Like, I remember a girl telling me, oh, yeah, my mom decided to have a bottle of wine and pizza and have a girls' night type of thing, you know? So, I think it's kind of depending on family and the child, but definitely all over the spectrum.
Under the bridge, too.
Yeah.
There's also what a lot of people don't understand as well, as there are parties around San Harbor and even outside of San Harbor, but there are also many, just a small friend group going to a person's house, and then their parents being, it's okay, I'll be, I'll watch over you, and that's not okay because of, one, the hostess law, and then, even if the parents are unaware of what's going on at their house, they still get in trouble for it, and then the child doesn't get as much of a discipline as the parent would because it's under their roof and they're supposed to know about what's going on in their children's lives.
And I think adding on to that, like, going on the line of parties, I think a lot of us also have friends in like East Hampton, Rich Hampton, Southampton, so it's not hard for me to like just drive my car, go to my friend's house in Southampton and do like wherever I want type of situation either.
We did a brilliant job of teaching our kids not to drink and drive, right? We've done such a great, phenomenal job of that. We really want us to take that conversation to the next level of is protecting those young developing brains, because that's really the part of the conversation. Was there any other questions?
Any other questions from the board? Can I ask one more, then? One more question, which is, does, did the survey ask about the prescription? Was that like, you know, pills or, you know, was it broken out into things?
Yeah, it specified, it specified as prescription drug for non-medical use, right? So, the idea was, you know, taking, taking prescription drugs as, as identified, as prescribed. In this particular case, when we're studying substance use, we're taking a look at how they used it outside of the parameters that it was intended.
So, they would know, like, you know, I know that there are pill parties where they go and they dump pills in a bowl and everyone grabs one kind of thing, they don't even know what they're taking.
I have to tell you, yeah, the whole Skittles party, I hear about that all the time. I've yet to speak to a young person who said that they saw it happen, right?
I've never heard of that before.
Also, in the, in the data from the focus group that was conducted that we briefly spoke about, that was brought up specifically, and the nine students who were there said they'd never heard of that. So, it could be something that used to happen, that maybe happens in other places, and that we've gotten this idea that we know one way that young people are doing things, and now they're onto something different.
Yeah. And again, you know, alcohol still remains the number one killer of our young people, and we cannot avoid that number. So, as, as much as we're so afraid about prescription pills, opiates and all that, alcohol is still the number one killer of our young people. Am I allowed to take a question from the board?
Not the audience, go ahead, Susan. Sorry.
I have two really quick questions. One is, the survey didn't ask, right, about vaping or club drugs, like the synthetic cocktail drugs?
So, I think that, so, it didn't, at the time, vaping was, 2016, it hadn't showed up, this was, this specifically was asking about smokeable tobacco. The newer surveys through prior surveys, which we're going to be engaged in, we'll have a whole conversation up in there about vaping. That is also something, it is at our discretion to add whatever questions we want to add in our surveys. You can actually have that added on, too. So, if things become important to this board or to Safe in San Harbor, we can ask very specific, right down to, are you doing this?
Because the vaping, and I hear about these club drugs, would I think be important to include. And the second is, for the students... And the second is for the students, who, you guys all did such an amazing job, so I think you gave us all hope, and not only in terms of the content, but just what wonderful presentation skills you all have. It's really, you'll all go far, I'm sure. But I have a question for you all, because from what you were looking at and recommending, and then you talked about the PSA campaign on Parent Portal, because you check your grades a lot. Do you guys, what are your ideas or suggestions about reaching those kids who are not as engaged in school or with their grades, who are clearly a very high-risk group?
Often, children who are not as committed to school and to their grades, their parents will be doubly as committed to their school and to their grades, so they will check Parent Portal, like, even more than someone who feels confident about their kid's commitment and grades. But for parents who might still not care about that and not care to go on Student Portal, I'm not sure if we have discussed anything, like, PSA-wise for that.
It doesn't even have to be PSA, just any idea about how to reach that group.
Well, I think, I was going to say, they had, there are strategies for change. The first one was educational community forums and workshops. Have you guys thought about, like, how to implement those and maybe include parents as well?
Yeah, and I think community is kind of a big part about it, because we always talk about how Sac Harbor has a lot of, like, very much generational families in the town. I mean, there's three cousins standing right next to me. But I feel like, you know, there's obviously new families just, like, coming into Sac Harbor and stuff, so bringing those families into the spectrum of the topic, and just reaching out to them, I think, is the most important thing. Because, as I said, like, it's not just teens and middle schoolers, it's also, like, starting with, like, your elementary schoolers, and like, who's at risk in the elementary school, something like that, and like, bringing that conversation up with them and those healthy habits up with them into middle and high school.
Now, what? My attitude would be taking a look at what we define as at-risk today, right? Because at-risk today looks very different than as we would define the at-risk kids. And in some ways, as I travel, travel to this great country of ours, we raise the bar on kids, which is awesome and brilliant. But out of the kids we're talking to, we haven't raised the support in how to continue to raise the bar. And so what often happens is simply having a couple of drinks on a Friday or Saturday night, smoking a little pot, is just a way of diffusing the stress and the pressure they feel under. Because one of the things that we are also capturing in the studies with Southampton Town is how overstressed and overanxious young people are feeling. So we haven't matched the mental health supports yet with what's going on, and it definitely has, plays a part in this. So sometimes we see that the kid who's on the fringe is very much, as much at risk as the kid who is a high-performing kid, who's done amazing across the board, it's just, it's a matter of getting good tools in there. Their focus is always going to be prevention, but our hope and our strategies is as you get the prevention going, one of the things that comes to the table is the gaps in service, and that's the job of the 12 sectors sitting around, is to take a look at the gaps in service, and what could we suggest for that same kid that you're talking about, who's starting to track out and go this way? What are some supports and some intervention and perhaps early treatment strategies we could use? This particular process will help point those out, but it would always be up to community resources and school resources to get those other intervention and treatment supports in there.
Because the challenge, even with all the forums, I mean, the school does an amazing job of bringing, you know, experts in and all these forums, but we all know it's the same group of parents that attend that every time, and so the challenge is, how do we bring in those other communities?
I have to say, reversing the stigma, we saw new faces, and I've been, like, I've been part of your community forums for a long time, right? And like, when I know who your community members are as an outsider, reversing the stigma brought in, your recovery community came out in a big way, and your recovery community has to be a part of this conversation. And we got some traction with other parents who we had never seen before. So the more we're breaking the stigma, the more we're chipping away, the more we're everywhere about it, my hope is that we're going to start, and I think your element, as you look at the 25, we had 25 folks at our safe meeting the other night, which is a large number of people to have at your safe monthly meeting. A lot of them were your elementary parents, who are motivated to make sure in elementary and middle school that they develop strategies to really carry through in those high school years as well.
I found the favorable attitudes are very enlightening, kind of shed a light on that it may be a cultural thing in the home, and that was, that was interesting, so I appreciate it. Any other questions for our panel? Is there some contact information for others that might have questions or might want to learn more?
Sure, I will give out my card. Danielle's here to represent the, we can, either one of us or any of the sector representatives for further follow-up conversations. Awesome.
Can you toss out what you're doing on November 15th?
Oh, so, yeah, so Southampton Town created an opiate task force under the leadership of Jay Schneiderman and Drew Scott. Eric Bromoff is part of that, that task force, as well as others, it's many different people throughout Southampton Town, a lot of superintendents and others. They will have three highlighted speakers. You will have Jeff Reynolds, who is a leader in this, a leading expert. You'll have Linda Ventura, who is a mom who lost her son, who sat here, she, we addressed the whole faculty, Linda and I, a couple of weeks ago. Linda will be a speaker, as well as Southampton Town Police Chief will have a conversation, and then it's going to be audience participation. Folks can ask questions to find out, you know, exactly what's going on in Southampton Town.
And where is that being held?
That's going to be at Hampton Bay's High School.
And it's open to the public in all school districts?
Everybody. Everybody should go. Pack the house.
I'm going to tell you, that got announced in my church yesterday. That's how widespread of a reach they're trying to make for that. So if anybody, that's a place to hang on, the 15th, if you want more insight.
Seven o'clock at night, and we can get that information out to everybody as well.
The survey that was done, that our kids filled out last year, which we saw the data tonight, they also filled out last year the Southampton survey as well?
Yeah.
So when will we see that data?
That you need, that's a conversation with Nancy Lynette, who's actually traveling and could not be here. That, you know, these, so part of our grant is we have to do studies every two years of the kids. Hers goes into, again, the mental health stuff, but that's, my, I don't know what Nancy's, I think they're going to survey kids shortly again this year, so I don't know when that data is going to come out.
Because if I took it last year, I don't know if we saw last year's data from Southampton.
We did.
It's online, yeah.
Okay, I guess I, she, I thought she-
Nancy presented.
Last year? I thought she presented three years.
Yeah, no, Nancy, yeah.
Was it Lester?
No, Nancy did. Thanks, Kim.
Awesome. Do you have an add?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to add on that, one of the things that all of us, and I think I've connected all of us for a lot of years, is that Kim runs the Long Island Teen Institute, so even if, like, you want to, like, send, like, I guess, your teens or, like, your middle schoolers, we love it, and I mean, we have connected with so many kids across the island, and we don't only just talk about alcohol and drugs, we talk about mental health and race and, like, homophobia and stuff like that, important issues that, like, involve teens and, like, stress and how to deal with it. So I think that it's a good thing if you, like, because I know we'll try to, like, put it out on blast to get more and new people to come, but it's usually sometimes really hard because of the whole reversing the stigma idea that we have. So I think, like, asking, like, your teenagers, like, to come hang with us for a weekend, we're not so bad.
Drug and alcohol prevention does not mean you're identified as somebody having a cancer. Awesome. Are we good? I don't, they're not taking them from the floor, but I would gladly answer a question from you on the side. So, awesome, thank you guys so much. Give them a round of applause. Love those guys.
All right, this time we will continue on to the principal's report and upcoming events.
So I think we did IV first, just because I have two teachers here that have families, and I'm first, so you should go through here. And that slide was just up. Ms. Graves asked us to put what we've done thus far, the left side is what we've done for earlier than we, and the right side is what we've implemented thus far this year, first off, which Kim talked about. All right, so NYPD, the hot topic tonight. So as we said before in our first presentation last spring, we discussed that the main goal of when we thought about bringing NYPD to our school district was that we wanted to increase the amount of participation, especially in the diploma program, the amount of certificates, and the amount of students participating, even trying them one class. And then, obviously, we want to create a, an environment that's culturally responsive for our kids, and that international mindedness that IV brings with our diploma program, we thought that'd be a great idea. So that was our goal, and still is. So here's our quick agenda, what we're going to go through. So with that-
Can you go back? I'm sorry.
It's okay. You good? Okay. So with NYPD, so if it's here, we have the same course offerings, there's not, like, this special NYPD course that students take, it's the same structure and same content area courses with our special elective that we have, and also our state mandates. Teachers all use this NYPD unit planner, so that transitioned a couple of years ago from the UBD to the unit planner, that's a big part of NYPD. The learner profile, which we talked about in the DP program, which stands for diploma program, we use the same profile, giving those nine traits for those children. Approaches to learning, that is the IV's same thing as the theory of knowledge class, the learning how to learn, so understanding how to collaborate with one another, knowing when to speak up and to advocate for yourself, knowing when to self-reflect and understand, maybe I should have done something differently. That's that approaches to learning. That has changed since we went into candidacy, it's much more extensive and much more robust of what they're asking for. And then the global context jargon that's utilized, which is these identities and relationships to create that interdisciplinary approach that the IV pushes forward, that we want our students to be involved in. Professional learning communities, those are the same, as you can see, grade team, department, and common planning time. Common planning time, as much as we say it's there, it is there, but for some teachers it cannot be there. So for example, our inclusion teacher for sub-eighth grade science does not have the same common prep as the general education teacher, so they have to use other time to do that. However, we've made it work and figured out other ways for doing that, but those are restrictions that we have in a small school with shared staff. Extra positions, NYPD coordinator possibly, yes, that's considered me right now, however, if it's very extensive, as much as I want to be as hands-on, that might mean I have to take a little bit of a step back in the middle school, or we have to have somebody be an NYPD coordinator. An assessment person that, that does those e-assessments, those are new, and then the personal project coordinator, that's the end, that 10th grade, they call it year five, that's that end project. There's also a project in, which would be the eighth grade year, which is a community project, so that person would take on both of those roles, because they are cohesive in the process. So if not, same course offering, as we said, I talked about the UBD, learner profile, we've been implementing this anyway in the middle and high school, the mindfulness, growth mindset instruction, inquiry-based learning, interdisciplinary learning, cultural responsiveness, data-driven instruction practices, and the assessments. So the other thing that would be added would just be the NYPD assessments.
Danielle, before you jump past this slide, can you just dig a little bit deeper for the difference between the NYPD unit planner and the UBD lesson planner?
Okay, so the NYPD unit planner, our teachers are going to talk about that, too, because I have them reflecting, which is great. It's a lot of jargon, and I hate to use that word, but it is, and it doesn't really apply to what they're actually looking at. So like, if I look at an NYPD unit planner that Mr. Malia did, and then his UBD version, I understand what's exactly going on in that classroom in the UBD version. In the NYPD unit planner version, they have different criteria for assessment that you number up with another part. I'm going to go through that, that's why everyone's looking confused, because I know I needed to dig a little bit deeper. So with that, it might not be exactly what he's teaching. So if he was understanding fluency and understanding linear relationships within his lesson, that might not be said in that NYPD unit planner. I still would have to ask him questions and further dig deep on what he's actually teaching, what those summative and formative assessments are going to be, so I understand what the actual goal is for our kids when they get out of that unit.
Just a point of information, please. Can you just go for those of us, I mean, through what the assessments are, the region, state interim, and NYPD? I mean, I think we all know what the regions are.
Yeah, we all know what the regions are. The state is for grade three through eight, any of those assessments. The science test for fourth grade and eighth graders, and then the grade three through eight ELA and math. Interim, we've been starting this, we've been working with the middle school on trying benchmark, benchmark assessments, to make sure that we're reaching the goals and the rigor that we need, because we want to have those kids in the eighth grade to access more of those accelerated high school classes, because we think acceleration for all-
So wait, so the interims are tests that you guys are giving the students-
Yes.
Separate from state?
Separate from state. It's just something that we do, and it also helps reflect back on our own teaching. So if we look at something and the majority of the class doesn't get that, we can look back and say, "Hey, I might need to reteach this topic again," or understand where it went wrong in our own teaching reflection.
So is that additional testing on top of, like, just quizzes or tests that kids would take as part of this class?
Yes.
Okay, and then-
And then the NYPD ones. And those are all the assessments, yeah.
All right, but just, can you give us a little more on, so what are the NYPD assessments?
The NYPD assessments are for the five content areas, so your main courses, so English, your second foreign language, or a language other than English, your history class, your science class, your math class. And then they do have assessments for design and arts as well.
When, are students who are in the program now, in the 11th and 12th grade, so are all those students taking, okay, but doesn't IV test them?
They do, so they have interim assessments and then external assessments. Those interim, internal assessments happen throughout the year, and then the external happen at the end of the year.
So my question is, are those students then taking IV content tests as well as regions?
They are. And generally, students who sit for an IV course are your highest achievers on your region's assessments, even though the curricula is not always aligned.
Why are they required to take both?
Well, IV has put forth to New York State, I don't know if it's legislation at this point, a request to have students exempted out if they meet certain criteria, but that's still pending.
I see. So, but right now, if you're in IV, you're basically getting double-tested.
Correct.
I'm sorry, isn't that double-test also earning you, depending on which college you go to, the credit? Without that second test, they don't earn the credit, am I correct?
Correct.
So, for example, Jeff shared with us that Isabel received 20, one?
The child, an individual.
One of our graduates.
Yeah, no, I, I get that.
But I think with, without taking that second test, they don't earn the credit.
And that, that is, that's similar with AP as well. I mean, any-
Any other questions on, go ahead.
Yeah, so when I looked up the IV middle years program, I saw that there's eight subject groups, 50 hours of teaching time for each group, an interdisciplinary unit that includes, involves at least two subject groups in a long-term project. Are you doing all those things now?
We have, so we have not done all of it. So the interdisciplinary units have been happening, grade six has it, grade seven, I believe, started it, might not have it because one of the teachers switched to different grade levels. Grade nine definitely has it. We've been doing that, that's been during the common planning time with that. And then, I'm sorry, I didn't listen, not that I did, I did hear all of it, but I didn't hear all the bullets. What was the second question of that?
So if you haven't done all of it, why does it say that we'd have the same course offerings and programs? It sounds like that wouldn't be the same.
Because that was a goal that we already had when we were bringing in the diploma program. The teachers can talk about it during department meetings. We discussed having interdisciplinary work between departments and grade teams.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand why, if the IV middle years program has programs and course offerings that you are not doing now, why that says same course offerings and programs?
Because it's the same courses.
Well, let me, let me answer that. The NYPD program doesn't necessarily have course offerings, it's more of a framework. So if you're an NYPD school, you don't necessarily offer a specific courses, it's a framework within which they operate. There are specific, probably, components, like the personal project, that's not in place right now. But I would say about 80% of the NYPD program, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is probably being addressed within the context of our classes right now, especially with the teachers who have been trained in NYPD and/or DP.
Going back to the middle year assessments, are they optional?
Yes.
So they, so the middle years, they don't have to take it?
You don't have to take it, but then what, yeah, but then you're buying a car and not really using it. So you don't know how you're, but then you don't know how you're doing against the other middles. And that's some, yeah.
One of the things that I think would be valuable, and then we can, we can go back through this, would be to have some of the teachers who work with our students and who have been IDP teachers, diploma program teachers, and middle years program-trained, in some instances, speak about their perceptions.
Yep.
Just to give you some background, I've probably been to about five or six NYPD trainings, trainings, category one, two, and even three, in different parts of the country. And I was the person who along with Gary Kavish at the time, who brought the DP program here against a lot of community opposition. So I'm a big fan of IB, and I think that I was the one who originally said, let's go pursue NYPD. And there are many elements of the program that are positive, but one of the big things that I'm picking up, or I've picked up over the last several years, in many of the schools that I've visited, is that the same level of enthusiasm that exists for DP doesn't necessarily exist for NYPD. And that's coming from a lot of the teachers who work with the kids and have been trained in both, and from administrators as well. So if you go out and you look, just to give you some context, that many of the schools who offer the diploma program, it's been a very slow process through which those schools are now moving to also do NYPD. So like the United Nations International School in Manhattan doesn't have the NYPD program, they have the DP program, for a variety of reasons. So with that, why don't we turn it over to Chase and...
You can skip ahead.
Yeah, and Ruth, and then go back.
Yep.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Chase Mally. I'm a middle school math teacher. I also teach a DP course in the high school this year. And this is Mrs. White Dunn. She's a social studies teacher, middle school and high school. I'd like to start by just thanking the Board of Ed for reaching out to receive input from the teachers on the path forward on NYPD. We really appreciate that we're involved in the process going forward. I'll be speaking tonight about some of the feedback that I've gathered from my colleagues. I've taken the time this week to kind of walk around to a lot of the middle school teachers and ask them ahead of time what some of their thoughts are, so I wanted to convey some of that to the board. And then Ms. White Dunn will come in and she'll follow up with some of her insights as a DP teacher, what her perspective is on the NYPD program. So to start out, just to echo some of what's already been said, the cost of the middle years program seems to far outweigh the additional educational value that would be provided if we were to adopt the extension. The overwhelming sentiment among the middle school faculty is that officially adopting the middle years program, in many ways, is an unnecessary formality. And it might overburden a small district like our own. One of the things that teachers really appreciate is the autonomy that a small district like ours might provide. It gives us the flexibility to do things that really intrigue the students and get them motivated, but the administrative burden of what we encountered when we were doing the NYPD training would really take away and I think really detract from the quality of teaching that I do. I'd be spending a lot of my time filling out paperwork, planning paperwork, that didn't seem to align with what I was actually doing in the classroom. Much of what the middle years program provides could be accomplished without the additional costs of taking an official, taking on the program officially. I also received consistent feedback that middle school teachers at Pearson have already begun to integrate their understanding of the IB learner profile into their teaching. I've had the chance to attend two of the category two trainings for the NYPD program. And whereas high-quality professional development often focuses on collaboration, where teachers focus on discussing best practices and sharing best practices, the majority of the time that I spent at a lot of these trainings was spent on familiarizing teachers with the nomenclature of IB. What language are we supposed to be using? How are we supposed to be filling out these lesson plans? And often, at times necessary, but burdensome paperwork that was accompanied by the NYPD designation. The best professional development we have received thus far has not come from attending workshops outside of district, but in-house workshops that have been provided by our own administration and facilitated by our own teachers and even our own students. Teachers feel strongly that with more shared planning time, we can accomplish a lot of the goals and a lot of the objectives of IB without actually bearing a lot of those costs. So here's Ms. White Dunn.
Hi, everybody. I've been teaching IB history here since 2012. And, you know, I'm a huge champion of the program, and I look forward to change and having new challenges kind of put forward. So when there was the option to start NYPD, we were excited to have that come, because I also teach seventh grade, so to me, it made a lot of sense. I've been to three different trainings for the IB diploma program, CAT one and CAT two, TOK as well. And I've never been to better training in my life. It was the best dollar Sag Harbor has ever spent on sending us to training for the DP program. And there, you know, over two or three days, you're given a program that helps us learn how to facilitate putting our students in the driver's seat of their education. And with that comes the assessments at the end of a two-year program. So my students are the most rewarding kids to work with because they are driving every day, and I'm facilitating that. And the way to get them through their assessments is to teach them basically how to have original thought. And the only way to do that is to get rid of our textbooks and to introduce them to different perspectives, right, this global context. And, you know, in history, in IB English, in literature, and the foreign languages, and the sciences as well, it's this idea that students are given different questions, and then they have to go about solving those questions and coming up with their own conclusions. So we're given these mark bands and scoring guides and rubrics and different types of activities that facilitate student learning, but we're not up here dictating it anymore. So the best way, and I'm not really here to go on and on about the IB diploma program because it is awesome, but when NYPD was brought here and we sat through trainings, I was really left dumbstruck as to where the program was. So we had hours and hours of fiddling around with wordplay and jargon and how to design a three-page unit plan. And when I say that we have to get our students reading critically, writing critically, so they can think critically, our time is best spent planning with our peers. So this year, I have an IB history counterpart for the first time. We plan every single day. I think we've missed three days where we haven't sat together at least twice a day. And it's the best. And he hasn't taught IB before, and he also teaches ninth grade. And he has already changed his ninth grade curriculum so that his kids are now examining world religion from different perspectives. In seventh grade, I had a student the other day that said to me, how come we're never taught this before? We're always told it's this way, we don't get to see things from counterpositions and point of view. My seventh graders, instead of learning about the American Revolution, now have to justify to what extent the American Revolution was truly a revolution. So they're looking at it from the point of view of women and Native Americans and from poor white men, and it's a different type of learning experience. But none of that came from sitting with NYPD trainers, teaching me wordplay and jargon. So I think that if we're going to put our money into better programs, it's to send us to IB diploma training and have that trickle down into the middle school years. So that's my take on IB diploma versus the NYPD being the best option for getting our middle school kids ready for the diploma program.
Any questions for the teachers before we go back to the other slide?
Just one. The, and I referenced getting the middle school students prepared, but the middle school IB program also addresses ninth and tenth graders, high schoolers, before they get to the last two years. And I'm just wondering how much we've institutionalized the approach and the philosophy of IB into that ninth and tenth grade, so that's those years where it's a springboard into it, and we're really, we're really creating a more successful onboard into the program.
I'll chime in, and then you guys feel free to chime in. Many of the teachers in the ninth and tenth grade are teachers of DP courses. So where it's appropriate, they will take some of those IB practices and implement it in their ninth and tenth grade courses. But it has to make sense, given where those classes are.
And if they haven't been trained or taught that, or don't teach the eleventh and twelfth grade IB courses, how would they be, you know, kind of enabled to institutionalize that in the ninth and tenth grade classes?
I think ninety, over ninety percent have.
Oh, they have, okay. So it's really been popularized through the school.
Yeah. And the only, I said it, and I didn't say it very articulately before, but when we brought the diploma program here, as the principal at the time, there was great enthusiasm with the core group of teachers, not with all of the teachers, but with the core group of teachers in terms of adopting the program. And that enthusiasm was key, because there's an awful lot of work that goes into making the program successful. From my perspective as the principal, I am not seeing that same level of enthusiasm, far from it, from the major players in terms of the teachers.
I just also wanted to say that there was a big transition, not from the perspective that people see it maybe on the outside of education, because a lot of teachers have been doing this for years, but Common Core really challenged teachers to think differently about how we teach math and ELA. And some of those challenges that we've been presented with kind of align with what is supposed to be done in IB anyways.
Yeah, actually, I guess I'll ask you guys this question. In my understanding, IB has recently changed the rules last year to allow for partial implementation of the NYPD program. What would your opinion be on just having it for ninth and tenth grade?
Sorry, and if you're wrong, it's bad.
You can't be half-pregnant. That's how I would answer that question.
But no, they changed the rule in 2016 that would allow for the partial implementation of the five-year program.
I don't, I think it's the same. I think it really comes down to the same amount of time that's required to write these laborious unit plans without, the mark bands that I get for the diploma program are so good because they require students to use these perspectives and analysis, which we haven't, you know, in, always had to have that as part of our curriculum. So it's much easier now for me to implement it with my seventh grade and start introducing them to what is analysis and how do we put it together? And I, you know, like I said, my colleague that just started teaching IB history is also a ninth grade teacher. And his curriculum has changed already within the first ten weeks of his teaching. So that's ninth grade. So I think there you go. I think that even though, as much as I would love to have another IB, NYPD, label, IB diploma, HODA teacher, you know, we can do a lot more with my time and your resources. So I don't think that having an, I don't know, I'm sorry, I don't know how you feel about...
No, no, you guys can be free.
But I think that whether you implement it to five, ten, or nine, ten, I think that you get the IB diploma itch, and it, believe me, it trickles down because it's better learning and our kids are thriving. But I don't see how the NYPD training puts us in the same position.
So are you saying that the unit planner for the NYPD is not required from the DP program?
Not at all.
Interesting. Okay, thank you.
That's not the, that's not our end game, right? We want our kids to be academically challenged so that they're entering college better prepared than they were last year. And our kids are, I see so much academic maturity come from our kids. It takes time, but, you know, it's worth it.
Any other questions for the teachers? Yeah, well, I mean, I'm not sure if it's a question for them or for Jeff or both. Well, I know that Jeff and Brittany have prepared a lot more information for us to go through, so if it's questions for the teachers while they have the podium. Otherwise... Well, I mean, yeah, but it might be relevant to them as well. Just a quick thing about, so, you know, you talked very eloquently about how, you know, you were in those trainings for the DP program and how you were able to implement that in seventh grade. But what about for teachers who are only teaching sixth, for example, only and not doing both? So how does one then get this great benefit for the program? Because everything you said about the global view and the different perspectives, I think is what everybody's trying to achieve here. So how do you do that with?
I think we've talked a lot in the past about having all teachers go to a TOK training. I think board members should go to a TOK training. I've sat in TOK and mostly TOK, my training, where I've had coordinators come, you know, it's really become the cornerstone of the program. And that's where you're taught how to question what we're learning and why we're learning those things. So I think that's where it starts. So if I had a sixth grade history colleague, I would probably say to him or her, go to an IB history CAT one training and learn about assessments and how we're supposed to be not teaching from textbooks.
And when you say IB CAT one training, I think she's talking about diploma program level?
Yeah, not NYPD.
Not NYPD.
And the other thing we discuss administratively is to do intervisitations among IB classes with our teachers that don't teach any diploma program classes, because just seeing them in action, it's always good to see your peers teach, but also to see them in action and also to discuss afterwards during department meetings is huge.
Also, IB, within our region, we have these roundtables. Also, we don't pay, you know, the district covers our mileage and, you know, that's about it. But they're regional, so we can drive for the day and collaborate with other IB schools. Our librarian just went with our TOK teacher to an extended essay one, so those are open to whoever our coordinators offer to. So there's different ways of, at our superintendent's conference a month ago, right, we had a couple of TOK teachers in our seniors, or no, it was just Hope, she did her TOK oral presentation. But our, you know, our colleagues learn a lot from that, too.
Well, I know at least one of you travels for a long way. So I really appreciate you guys coming in, sharing your perspective. I sort of feel like it's cheating to choose my older son's favorite teachers right there, so how am I supposed to not do anything they say? Thank you. Any other questions for the teachers? Okay, thank you.
So do you still want to go over the slide?
Yes.
So I think we hit on everything, but if it needs me to dig deeper on anything?
I still don't understand it.
I think the hard part with explaining NYPD, it's a framework. So in the diploma program, you get...
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just had one of the, somebody in the audience say to me, you know, this is all very interesting, but some of the acronyms we're not familiar with. So NYPD, let's call it what it is, middle years program, deeply diploma program, those kinds of things.
TOK.
TOK is theory of knowledge. So I apologize for that. Sorry to interrupt.
Okay.
You're speaking in code.
So the diploma program is for the eleventh and twelfth graders, for people that don't understand that. The middle years program is for grade six through ten, as Ms. Kerr mentioned before. You have now have the option of just doing ninth and tenth grade. Theory of knowledge is the course when you take the diploma program and a diploma program candidate. That is a course, we do it over two years, it meets every other day. That's the learning how to learn and understanding how to learn. And that seems to be the driving force of IB, which is international baccalaureate. So is there any other acronyms that I missed? Okay. The approaches to learning, also known as ATLs, but I never even put that in there, so I think that was it. And UBD underbit, standing by design, that's like Brandon Wiggins, that's research-based unit planning. unit planning. All right. Any other questions?
Other questions from the board of these comparisons?
I don't think that's what you were referring to, but you're an attorney and don't need my help.
I still don't understand how, or maybe we're calling course offerings instead of something else, but it seems like there's a very specific program with the IB middle years that we are not doing now. So I don't, I still don't understand how we say the same thing.
So I would say we're in candidacy phase right now, so eighty percent, as Mr. Nichols stated, we are doing. We are doing an interdisciplinary unit within each grade level. I believe there's one grade level that's not, and that's the 10th grade. So that's one component we're not doing. As for program offerings, we only have to, in the candidacy phase, have to draw out how we're going to implement the community project and personal project. Our PPS department, which is our pupil personnel services, our guidance counselors have been working with me on it. So that's what we've been doing there. So there's different portions of the candidacy phase that they have a checklist that we're doing as much as we can, maybe a little bit more, but not everything. So that's why I'm saying the same course offerings, because I think there was misconception with one of the questions I got back from the, um, presentation, which was saying that, well, we're not offering a pre-DP class or any of that. We never have done that before. So that might be why I put the same course offerings. I apologize if it's confusing.
And one of the things that, made a little clarification for me, if this helps, is that, um, one of the things about NYPD is that the framework is adaptable to meet the needs of individual state standards. So the thinking is that in, in three through eight, kids will have to take state assessments, so they can't say, well, you're not going to learn this in eighth grade because in your state, you're supposed to learn that. And so it's a framework around teaching and instruction less than individual standards and content.
So can we clarify that further by saying that there's really no, like, specific courses?
Is that, am I just speaking accurately?
Exactly. There's no specific courses.
It's just a framework on how to, the classroom evolves.
Exactly.
And so my understanding from what you're saying is that framework includes the way you plan your units, the way you plan your lessons, the way you think about instruction.
The way you hold your common planning time meetings with this approaches to learning, which is their level of how you do theory of knowledge, which is learning how to learn. And when we did it with our faculty in our department meetings, and the teachers can respond back to it, it was laborious of this checklist that you had to fill out on how to collaborate, and it was overwhelming instead of actually being more useful for talking about what skills each kid wants. We want them to have when they graduate each grade.
You mentioned that there's not interdisciplinary training, um, planning in 10th grade, correct?
Yes.
Is there a reason why we're not doing it in all of those grades?
We, so before we even started middle years and previous thing back to when Mr. Kish was here, we started doing interdisciplinary work in department and through faculty meetings, and we're going to continue doing it. I think we put a halt on it because we have a lot of initiatives being thrown at us. And as much as we want to do everything, we don't get to everything. We're like the kid with the checklist that never gets done.
But is there a goal to really integrate?
Absolutely, because that's.
Across all the grades?
Because when you get out into the real world, even out of college, you're not just doing a math problem. There's more to it.
Can I ask a question that might go to Alex's concern, and I think it's one that I can also, I think is not having, is what I'm hearing today from the teachers and from you is that, uh, this is more of an approach, like the way you teach. So it feels more sort of like the college way, a smaller group, and it's, the kids are driving the learning, basically, right? And the teachers guiding.
That would be in the diploma program, yeah.
Right? I mean, that's what you were sort of saying. And so I think, I think when, I don't know, Alex, if you feel the same way, when I see course offerings, I guess I think curriculum. And so is, 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 are we to understand that this program, it doesn't then change the actual curriculum, it just changes how the same curriculum is taught? Is that correct?
I wouldn't even go that far. I would say that a lot of what I've learned to do in middle years program training, again, didn't really focus on that so much, but it was trying to get me to do what I'm already doing. So we'd be paying like this fee, we'd be bearing these costs, we'd be, um, encumbered by some of these things that we need to get done, and it wouldn't really change what's going on in my classroom.
Right. But I think it's because you've already taken whatever step that is, right? You see, I get.
But Common, Common Core has required us to take a lot of those steps already.
All right, let me just put it this way.
Let me, let me try to answer it. I think that the introduction of the diploma program and everything that it entails in terms of everybody getting trained and going to those three-day trainings, sometimes multiple times, has transformed, um, the way that instruction is delivered in our school. So if you were to look at our school maybe five or six years ago and look at it today, a lot of the things that the faculty is requiring students to do and the thought processes that they're requiring students to engage in are fundamentally different than they were five or six years ago. From my perspective, um, the faculty and the administrators think that the diploma program training had an awful lot to do with that. And the assessments that they're preparing the students for goes back to what gets measured is what gets done. The middle years program, however, my sense is, having attended multiple trainings and spoken with a lot of teachers, is that a lot of this, a lot of the training addresses superfluous issues. Vocabulary that doesn't necessarily change the instruction, just adds to the administrative duties that the teachers have to do, or complete, rather. Would you guys say that's accurate?
Yes.
Well, I guess, look, and I'm wanting to support what you guys think best, honestly. But I'm also hearing, you know, from sort of the members of the community and all the push that we had about getting the IB program here and, and why parents would get up and say they think this is important. And so I think for me, the best analogy is probably looking at history. And so I remember hearing the kids, my son including, who coming up through the elementary school says, you know, oh, we learn about US history every year, because it's, I understand it's mandated by the state, right? And so then all of a sudden, the kids hit something like a global history, and it's like, wow, it completely changes their perspective. So I wonder if the parents we're hearing from and those who are thinking, oh, we, we want this program because it will change the curriculum. You see what I mean? I guess I'm trying to help, help me understand how we explain that to them. And I guess I also want to understand, aren't we then using what we got from the DP program to really make that whole curriculum richer, so when the kids get into middle school, they're excited and they're going, wow, and, you know, not only are they learning in new ways, but they're learning stuff that's not the same old, same old, no offense, Matt, you know, it's the same stuff.
I see a geometry teacher back there called Geometry Wars.
I think the biggest thing that we want to instill, especially in middle school, so it prepares you so that we have more kids accessing the higher level, um, classes for the IB, even if it's just to take one or do the diploma program, is this different perspective and this culturally responsiveness that we're trying to teach into without having to pay. And that's why Mr. Malia said that with Common Core, that's the changing in thinking, the asking of why, the understanding of what Pythagoras was meaning with the three different pots of gold and how two are the same size as one, and understanding the why of something is what IB is trying to get at.
I think also going along your lines, I think you're talking about also more of a philosophical framework, kind of maybe to answer the question that every kid always asks, what the hell is it supposed to do with this? By putting that in a framework of interdisciplinary approach, they can see the bigger picture. But the question is how, we say that's going to trickle down, the question is how do we make sure it is uniform across the schools?
So at this time, I'd love to see what else you've prepared, and then we'll all borrow two questions later.
Um, so we talked about this already, it can be implemented in nine and 10. I did talk to the person that does our actual authorization at IB. There are statements back to me, because I know that you guys had questions of why. Remember, they are a business, so they're, they're, of course, it's going to be keep consistent with the building, not gain, you're not gaining the full program, so it's not trickling down to the middle school levels, and could delay, delay the process of the authorization if there was a shift.
You mean if you were to change the.
If we were to change just nine and 10, if we just want nine and 10, it's going to extend the process.
How much longer would it extend?
They could not answer that specifically, because I knew you guys would answer. I said a week, a month, and they were like, I don't know. So it's dependent on working with your consultant. So training, um, the entire staff excluding the six new hires have been trained in middle years program, so in the middle years program. So the, this training included the IB consultants training that came in, so we had our own IB consultant give feedback, that's what Ms. White Dunn was talking about. And then we also had a consulting firm that came in and also presented to our faculty department and grade team and common planning time. We've been sitting administratively and also with our teachers, and they've been working on various levels of training. And then, so we had only 10 teachers sent to NYPD training, middle years program, my apologies, training. And then for the diploma program, this is where I think Mr. Nichols and the teachers, Mr. Malia and Ms. White Dunn, made a big sell on this, is that this is where nineteen out of 20 of the IB diploma teachers also teach grades six through 10. And then just in the middle school, 12 out of those 20 teachers teach, um, six through eight, and then 16 out of 20 IB diploma teachers teach grades nine and 10. I think this was confusing when I said this to you, so hopefully, I think it scaffolds it more, you can understand it, so.
I don't want to put you on the spot, but is the reverse, how many teachers in sixth are not IB teachers, simply because I don't know how many?
How many teachers are not IB teachers? So I believe the only, we only have two, two IB teachers, and those are in elective classes.
So for six to 10, of the total population that teach six to 10, because that was my question, how many aren't, aren't covered by this?
I'm not understanding the question.
This tells us of the IB teachers, how many teach that, that, of all the teachers of those grades, how many are not IB trained? Are not teaching IB courses, right?
No, how many are not IB trained?
Well, at the sixth grade level, you've got some new faculty.
We have new faculty, and there's only two that are IB trained.
So that means that there are two that aren't?
I said there's only two that are trained, so how would there be two that aren't?
Of the four cores.
Two of the four cores. Middle years program, one is trained, and that's it. Everybody else is, everybody has middle years program, they're asking about diploma program training, right? Are you asking about diploma program training?
Diplom program.
Thank you.
DP.
Thank you.
How, how many of our middle school teachers are DP trained?
That's why I was.
Okay, that's the question. All right.
Yeah, I can't answer that at this time, without giving wrong numbers possibly, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, this, this data we're going to skip over, because I feel like our teacher reflection was much.
Wait, can I, I actually. I'm, I'm just.
It's okay.
I'm having a hard time understanding how your problem is data. And I know, Mr. Nichols, you've expressed your opposition to the middle years program, and I respect your opinion, but when I read about this, it seems that the data shows that students in a middle years program outperform other students in science, math, and reading, and that students in schools where they have a middle years program do better in the diploma program than schools where they don't. To me, that's data. It seems like instead, we've just sort of cherry picked three quotes from people who don't like the program, we called it qualitative data. I mean, I don't understand.
So I can speak on this, not Mr. Nichols, because he didn't make the slide. So I can speak on this. The first part is the IBO research paper, and I explained that, yes, you, what you just said, kids are more successful. The IBO supported that research paper. So as somebody who has been trained in, in the international and being, um, baccalaureate, you want to look at other perspectives that aren't done by the actual organization that's doing the research, because all of the research that I've seen, unless you've seen others that are not from the IBO, there is no other. I couldn't find another research paper that wasn't done by, or funded by the International Baccalaureate.
And you weren't able to find any quotes from anyone who's.
So my quote for the qualitative data was from a messaging board. So it's teachers, right, venting. Those are what messaging boards are. Teaching is a very laborious task. It is draining. So of course, when I got the feedback back that they're all negative, of course, they're going to be the majority of it, but the reasons why I picked certain quotes is because they touch up what our teacher reflections are. So for example, the bottom part, it's the foundations of the diploma program, pre-DP in terms of curriculum. In other words, NYPD is much more about a philosophy of learning. Our teachers touched on that.
But they haven't taught in the program. So I'm trying to understand why you only picked the quotes from the people who didn't like it, and is it?
Because the, where I got the messaging board, it was venting, nobody was supporting the.
You were unable to find a positive quote from anyone about the middle years program?
They said it was very laborious, so that's where I got.
Let me just, let me just also clarify something you said before. I'm not an opponent of the IB NYPD.
Okay.
So in my role as the principal, part of what I do is, is obviously learn about the program, but then make a considered judgment as to whether or not the positives outweigh some of the negatives. So there are certainly many positive elements of the NYPD. To say I'm an opponent of it is inaccurate.
Okay, but you have recommended against the.
I have recommended against the adoption of it, um, given the, the factors that we addressed several months ago and then tonight, yeah.
Okay, and I appreciate that, I just, with the, with the qualitative data, because I read, read a lot about this, and I could find three quotes, I could find 30 more from people who were opposed to it, but I found lots of things, lots of papers and quotes from people who were supportive of it, so I'm trying to understand.
Were they IB?
Uh, yes.
That's, no, that's what I'm saying, where do the papers come from?
No, no, I, just from lots of things, schools who have it, other schools that were considering it, comparing it. And so I'm just trying to understand why we just selected three quotes from people who don't like the program and called that bad.
Next time I will do a better job of being culturally responsive.
I'm not talking about culturally responsive, I'm just trying to show whether.
No, because that is culturally responsive. I apologize that our data was skewed.
Well, I think it could have been, I think it could have been more balanced.
Yes, and I talked about that right before the meeting, and I stated that I wanted to delete the slide, but it didn't delete. As I said, we have a very long day, I apologize.
You should try to skip over it, too.
And as I stated before, I, yeah. So my apologies that the data was skewed, I wanted to delete the slide, it didn't get deleted.
I do, I don't need, I don't need to reject, but I had met with Mrs. Carriero earlier last week, and I communicated with a lot of teachers. I went around the building the last week, knowing that this was going to be happening, and I could not find a single teacher that didn't share the same exact response to the training that they received.
Okay, that's this building.
Which, yeah, okay. But my, my question was somewhat related, was did we, there are schools that have implemented, not as many as the diploma program, it's been much more slow to get, to get adopted, obviously, and implemented. I was curious, have we reached out to any schools that were kind of early adopters to say, did this help you? Do you feel like when you added this, did this help or not? That's anecdotal in nature.
So we visited.
And I, and I agree that if it's.
You got it.
If it's a paper that's done by the International Baccalaureate Organization, they're in the business of selling their program, so it's not going to be advised, so.
I, yeah, so I've probably talked to probably teachers from between 20 and 30 schools who have, um, adopted NYPD, were in the candidate phase, um, had abandoned the candidate phase, and the feedback in general is very similar to the feedback that, in terms of the negative, very similar to the feedback that Mr. Malia and Ms. White Dunn provided in terms of some of the, the training really addressing administrivia and that those requirements related to the program were not well received, that it's, it was not centered to what the, like, the diploma program really changes what happens.
Right.
I did not get the same sense or enthusiasm in a lot of instances. Certainly, there were schools and trainers who were very enthusiastic about it. I'm just saying, in my experience, it wasn't as universal as the diploma program.
Because I'm just wondering if there were schools that, once they implemented it, saw that the success of the diploma program was increased because they implemented the middle years program, that would be important for the board to understand as well, just to have a really, you know, balance.
The program probably that we, we could, we could, um, reference the most, and they're still in the early phase, it stops very, um, very similar in size to ours. We actually did a site visit there, I think Ms. White Dunn, you were there, when we were in the diploma candidate phase, and since that time, they have become an NYPD school. So we're certainly going to follow up with them.
But what Chris was just asking about, that's correct, right, that, that schools with a middle years program do better in the diploma program than schools without.
That's what the IBO research states.
And I was asking, because it's obviously biased, because they're in the business of selling their program, the fact that, you know, if we can reach out to actually the people that run those programs instead of the organization to say, have you really found this? have you really found this? And what was the difference pre and post implementing the middle years? So did the success rate, the, the number of students that did it or whatever, what was the real data? Just go to the source.
Okay, so, all right, valuable elements that we implement, any, we talked about this with the slide with the comparison of NYPD for first not. Um, professional development's still ongoing, um, common planning time, we're still working on this. As a small school, it's one of our biggest struggles, um, making sure that we have common planning time for all those teachers. Um, the curriculum instructional shifts, the learner profile, all of our teachers have been trained in the learner profile and understand those traits. Um, it is being implemented even in our eighth, like, for example, I just observed an eighth grade social studies class and at the end, it was a Friday, at the end of the, at the end of the period, their exit ticket was reflecting on how each trait they presented. Um, and they did possibly in class as an example of what they did in class. So for example, how they were a risk taker that week. They had to write a reflection on that. So those things are happening. Um, the interdisciplinary units we talked about, we said that grade ten we're working with still. Um, inquiry-driven theory of knowledge practices, this is the learning how to learn. Um, culturally responsiveness perspectives, Ms. White Dunn talked about this, the going from a different angle and understanding a different point of view. Um, and international mindedness. We are on the east end, we are a little isolated. So making sure our kids are global citizens is huge. Um, common jargon to align with the international baccalaureate diploma program demands. We have that. Um, it's per, part of our faculty meetings, part of our department meetings, part of our grade team meetings. And then the biggest thing that we want is to increase the rigor for all of our students.
Uh, just a quick question about the jargon. So is the NYPD jargon completely different than the DP jargon?
So the, the learner profile is exactly the same. Um, there's different aspects. So there's the approaches to learning, that's new jargon, that's not aligned, that is supposed to be aligned with the theory of knowledge. Um, but it's not completely cohesive as we've seen, or we've struggled with that. Um, and then the global contexts are not, so. That's their way of figuring out how to do interdisciplinary units.
For younger students.
For younger students. I can keep on, okay. Um, concerning elements, E-assessments, over assessing our student body, the personal project made mandatory, time demands, distracting focus, feedback that we got when I was talking to other, um, middle years program people is that it's not always aligned with the diploma program requirements. Um, so the extended essay and the creative action, creative activities service project that they have to do, the, it's just reflecting on how you are as a learner. So what I've understood from learning the middle years program and going to trainings is the middle years program is learning how to learn a more of a philosophical, philosophical, um, undertaking while the diploma program actually has that academic rigor portion that we would like to see. Um, the approaches to learning expansion, the international baccalaureate middle years program jargon, not to the point, more philosophical, which I just test upon, touched upon. Um, the assessment criteria shift necessitating grading policy in grades six through ten. So we're gonna talk about this in the next slide because I know that some of you have questions about that and then the cost. So the assessment shift, we would have to change our grading policies. Um, for summative assessments, which are your assessments at the end of a unit, they need to be graded on these different criteria. So this is what Ms. White Dunn and Mr. Molly were talking about. I know it's very small, but down to your other sheet. Um, so for example, if we're looking at sciences, criteria A is knowing and understanding. Criteria B is inquiring and designing, processing and evaluating, or reflecting on the impacts of science. So you would pick one of those as your, that's what you're doing for your summative assessment. It won't be a combination of two different ones because you're using this to then assess totally here. However, when you're doing a summative assessment, you might be mixing these two together. So that's where I was talking about before, how it could be sometimes rigid to somebody.
Now, is this assessment criterion not required for the diploma program?
It's a bit different.
So the diploma program is very, uh, cut and dry, if you will, in terms of the requirements for individual courses. Um, standard level courses, one-year courses have a summative assessment at the end and an internal assessment um, over the course of the year. Higher level courses are two years in duration and have a summative assessment at the end and some internal assessments, um, which you know exactly what they are and it's very black and white. You wanna add to that, Ms. White Dunn?
Yeah, that's about, our internal assessment is a student-driven research paper, basically. And, um, then at the end of the senior year, for my class, it's a higher level class. They sit for three external exams, one's a prescribed subject. So I do know exactly what the content is gonna, you know, what will be on the exam to some extent. And then two other exams, they sit for six hours of essay writing. You know, with, um, recommended content. So it's, you know, it's more like a program.
So is this, these assessments, is this how they expect us to do all of our summative assessments? Or is this just for their E-assessment?
No, these are just for all of our summative assessments need to be in that type of format. So we would have to figure out number-wise how we would, what an eight would be, what range an eight or a seven would be on that.
What, what do you mean? Like, would, like an eight would correlate to a B?
Correlate to, because we have number grades, right? So we'd have to correlate from a hundred to ninety-five could be an eight, and ninety-five to a ninety could be a seven. So you have to figure out, you have to change your grading policy.
But it also looks like you've changed your actual assessment, even though I'm just looking at the math. You have an assessment just on communication?
Yeah.
Any other questions on this?
I, I had a quick question about what Ms. White Dunn just said about, you said external assessments?
Right.
So is that something where they're going outside the building, like an SAT type thing? Or is it tests that you give?
Yeah, no, the internal assessment, so my students will write their own papers and then I score. And then ID will audit my scoring, or it's called modification, basically. They moderate it. So they'll pick a random sampling and an examiner will look at my scoring. And overall, if they wanna moderate it down five percent, then all of my scores go down five percent. And the external exams, I never see. So my kids come in, they sit for their exams and our staff picks them up and our coordinator ships them off around the globe to other examiners, so they're.
But like, is that done on a Saturday when they have to come in and do that?
No, during the course of May, for like three weeks, our kids are taking.
Wow, but then you don't find out the results of the external exams?
Till, in July we do, July fifth, every year.
But they're, but they're college selections at that point. They're done and they're half-packed and on their way.
Yep.
Unless it's in a eleven grade, one-year course, where they've got.
Correct.
True, right.
So how would their transcript be finished then if they're?
No, 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 because this is just for ID. My understanding is that that exam, those external exams, aren't really for grade. They're just for IB purposes to make sure.
Yeah, to get the, to get the diploma, you have to have a certain grade in those external exams, otherwise you don't get the diploma. So when you graduate, your, it's diploma pending. You don't know when you go to graduation, you get your diploma, whether you've actually gotten your, achieved your IB diploma until the summertime.
And then those scores, I would assume, uh, im- impact whether colleges take the credits like the one.
Yeah, but not, not in a summative way. In other words, if, sorry, Ruth.
Certain schools will, we encourage our seniors when they're looking at schools to definitely make sure they know if those colleges will accept IB credit, whether or not if you can place into higher, upper-level classes. Each school has different criteria and that's really what it's, they're looking for. But on their transcripts, they are telling schools that they are IB diploma candidates. And they do not know the result of that until July after they graduated from high school, so.
And that doesn't impact whether or not their admission is withdrawn if they don't earn the diploma. The only, the only significance of those individual summative assessment scores, they're scored one through, what is it, one through seven, is that certain schools have different criteria to either opt out at introductory courses or actually be awarded course credit.
That was one of the big differences when we were looking at IB versus the AP. With AP, those courses are one year, so you've got to have taken five AP courses in eleventh grade. And when you're applying to college, you know what your scores are already on those assessments and that is part of the application process. With IB, it's not.
And just going back, I, I just wanna touch on the research again, Alex. I, I wasn't really impressed with the scope of the research that IB noted. I think they looked at like twenty, low twenties, twenty-two schools. They only looked at four or five countries. And there's some other data in there referencing SAT and ACT scores. Um, to their credit, they note that, which is not as conclusive. Um, and in their summary section, if I remember correctly as well, they did say that the most, um, I guess one of the most important things to draw from their research was that diploma, uh, program practices, test-taking strategies and those kinds of things be implemented, uh, in the years preceding the diploma program.
Was it qualitative or quantitative?
That was the qualitative, what I just referenced there.
Yeah.
And the quantitative, I thought, from strictly from a statistical perspective, was pretty limited. And they didn't, they didn't reference in the study that I read, any schools in the United States. It was four, four nations, um, I think twenty-two schools, which is, the sample size is not that large.
Um, school culture impact, um, we have these things already in place. We talked about them before. Um, the UVD unit plan, which is understanding by design, we would shift back to that if we, if the board decides not to go with NYPD, middle years program, common planning time in grades six through eight, grade team meetings, department meetings, educational jargon that makes sense to staff without re-teaching new terms. Um, we found that out when we were doing those big day, um, unit planners for the middle years program with our consultant, teaching into the jargon and the, the different aspects and elements of the unit planner were much more confusing than understanding what the purpose of the pedagogy that we wanted to actually teach. Culturally responsive educational practices and continued growth and this international mindedness were already an IB-minded school without the approval of the International Baccalaureate Organization. Um, and we continue to want to do that for our kids. That is our goal as a school. Um, teachers are well-trained in international baccalaureate practices and we will continue that. And then professional development is always planned around what skills we want to, our kids to have when they graduate. And those are the diploma program skills, because we know that when they graduate, even if they take one inter- IB class, they have the skills for a college-level course.
Okay, question. If we're a candidate school right now, when would we have been given our, our, what?
Our authorization, we'd have to have a visit in the spring and then from there, they would give us a stamp of approval.
So they do one of, they do one of three things. They either say you're approved, you're rejected, or you need to work on the following things. And usually, ninety percent of the time, it's, it's the last option. Where the site, the site visit results in recommendations that you address and then they come back one more time and approve.
But didn't we go through that already once? No.
We did that with the diploma program.
Okay, so i- i- if they came in and said, you're good to go, we would be good to go in September, well, we're going already, I get it, we're doing it, blah, blah, blah. We'd get our diploma to do it in September of eighteen?
No.
No.
No, and actually, I think there was a little bit of a misunderstanding because when we presented this three or four months ago, I, I don't know how many months ago it was at this point. The administrators were under the assumption that at that time, the decision was to not move forward. Um, since that time, there's been a request to revisit it, which we're doing. But if we were to have to get back into the, um, the pipeline, we'd have to reach out to our consultant. And just, I mean, it's doable, it's entirely doable.
I mean, so have we, have we technically withdrew our candidacy?
We did not submit the payment for the, for this year.
I guess that was my next question.
Yeah.
How much money have we spent on our candidacy already?
I think it was between, I don't, is Ms. Shamy?
Yeah.
I am here, but I would not know the answer.
Could be as little as four, it could be as much as ten, thousand.
So if the decision was to reengage, the site visit would be next September with the, oh, could be anytime?
I don't wanna speculate. We'd have to talk to the, um, we'd have to talk to the IB regional office and talk to our consultant.
So we don't know when it would be, two thousand eighteen or nineteen? It would depend on approval process and where we're at.
If you could boil this all down and shoot it through the funnel and out the other end. I'm leaving the witness here, sorry. I, I, I believe what's happening is that, that as a board, as a school, as administrators, as teachers, as have we, have, as we've pushed IB as, for eleventh and twelfth, a way of life, a good thing, a different way of learning, which it is, by the way. I've never seen more excitement and conversations since eleventh grade. Um, that we then said we were gonna roll it out and, and give it to everybody. And now what I'm afraid the community, the parents, the elementary school folks are hearing is, okay, we're not gonna give you, we're gonna take it away. But if we really peel it back, we're not taking away anything. In other words, I think where you're going, I, and I, I, okay? Math, science, history, foreign language.
Social studies.
Social studies. It wasn't like on top of that, we were gonna give you theory of knowledge, how to grow up to be a great citizen, take this class in seventh grade and you get into Stanford. That, I think, is the misconception. All we were gonna do is teach you those five basics in a different way, which we're doing because we've all learned how to think that way. Is that what the problem through the funnel is blowing?
My question is, is what, what are you recommending that we're gonna do for the students in grades six through ten? Because you talked about the increased rigor for the diploma program and everyone's happy about that. And you were recommending against the middle years program. But we're hearing from parents in the community about how, um, both how, how successful the diploma program is, but also from a lot of parents, how something seems to be missing in those middle years and how we're losing some of our top students who are going off to boarding school and other schools. And so we're talking about how great the increased rigor is for grades eleven through twelve. But what are we, what's the recommendation of what we're gonna do for grades six through ten? Because there is concern in the community that what we have now is not enough. And it seems like the answer, this is why we're doing all this stuff anyway. But that doesn't seem to address the concern for, for the folks who are looking for increased rigor in, in the years six through ten.
So my, my answer to that is, and, and, you know, I probably can't provide the answer you wanna hear. So let me preface it, that, preface my, my response with that. But my response is that we follow the curriculum that, that we're expected to follow right now, which is the New York State curriculum. And that where appropriate, we provide, um, multiple opportunities for enrichment, whether it's through honors courses or AP courses, which are offered in tenth grade. And that as it relates to IB, we let the elements of the program that make sense for middle-level students be implemented and, and the process through which that happens is having people who are IB trained, um, teach those classes in grades six through ten. Um, that's not an adoption of a formal program. And my suspicion is that the answer, at least how you framed your question, the answer I'm providing is not sufficient.
No, I don't have an answer on here, I just don't know.
Along the lines, you're also wondering like, okay, so we don't officially adopt it. How do we have uniform oversight of six to ten to make sure that the philosophical teachings are in fact being ingrained in those classes?
I think the philosophical teachings, we've started to figure out how to teach back into that. And also, we discussed having teachers that don't do any diploma programs go to those diploma program offsite conferences. As for rigor, um, one of the things which is big in our middle school is we're trying to get more kids to access those accelerated courses. And for example, this year, we only have one section of science eight and everybody else is taking living environment. So we are trying to increase the rigor within our school. We have department meetings, which we sit through. Mr. Molly, you can talk about it, how we're trying to figure out how to increase the rigor, but also support some fundamental things that the students might be missing. also support some fundamental things that the students might be missing. So we've done a lot of different things. We've increased math time. That's why we want to introduce interim assessments. So for example, money not spent here, we can use for benchmark assessments and interim assessments, and then look back and have those data days to look over what we're teaching and not teaching.
And those interim assessments, Diana knows this, and maybe some of the others, but they'll provide very detailed information on where our students are strong and where they're struggling. And then we can tailor the instruction to address those weaknesses. And the other thing that I would say is that, being a 6 through 12 school, we do have the luxury of being able to track the participation and the number of kids who access the diploma program. Both the entire program and the number of students who take individual courses, certificate courses. And those numbers have jumped. And I'm hoping that that pattern continues. I have no reason to think that it's not. I mean, this year, we've got 34 students, I believe, who are diploma candidates.
Right, but I think one of the points you're making is geared more toward 6 through 8.
But what I would, but what I would say to that is that the number of participants is largely a reflection of the preparation that's happened in the years preceding it. So when Ms. White Dunn, in 7th grade, Social Studies, is taking those habits of mind that she's learned in her training at the diploma level, and what she utilizes with her students, and implementing that at the 7th grade, that's having a tangible impact in terms of the number of kids who are choosing to access the diploma program down the line. And the same could be said for Ms. Farrell, who's an 8th grade English teacher, who's your IB English teacher. The same for the Schumacher brothers, who teach IB Chemistry, IB Environmental Systems and Societies. The same for Ms. Stellato and Mr. Barron, who have both taught IB Bio and teach 8th grade and 9th grade Biology. I mean, it's happening, but.
I was going to say, the, I think the take rate of students in the coursework is one data point that we're enabling greater success. I think the other is looking at how many are actually passing the IB exams. Because I would imagine, if you're implementing those learning strategies in the middle years, whether you have the program or not, they're more likely to be more successful even earlier in the diploma program, right? Because they understand how to think differently, they understand how to question to work differently. So I would hope that regardless of whether we go formally with the Middle Years Program or not, we're really monitoring as we, as we continue to expand this implementation, how it is impacting the success rate of those courses, not just the take rate of those courses.
And you saw that on the IB presentation that Mr. Guinan reviewed, where the summative average of our students, what a cumulative average, is now exceeding the world average.
Right.
And we're continuing to improve.
I'm just trying to understand the specifics of what you had said about increased rigor and what the opportunities are. If you're an 11th or 12th grade student that wants to challenge themselves and take more challenging coursework, you can take one of the IB classes in the diploma program. What opportunities does a 6th or 8th grader have?
So, let me speak to that.
Sure.
So the, so there is philosophically, that there is a little bit of a debate at which point you start to move beyond enrichment within the class. So that would be ability grouping in the class, and then actually tracking by sections. So where we accelerate here is at, in 8th grade, in Science, Math, in Tech Grade, in English, and Social Studies.
Meaning, and I'm not trying to interrupt, by accelerate, you mean a student 7th grade can take an 8th grade course?
Yeah. In 8th grade, typically, they're taking a high school-level course for credit that appears on their transcript. The debate, if you will, is when you start to accelerate certain kids. When you accelerate kids, you've tracked them, and you've sort of mapped out their future to some extent. So there's great debate at when you should do that. I'm not a big proponent personally of tracking kids early on, because it clicks for different kids at different times. 8th grade's about as early as I would go. But what I said at the beginning is, you certainly can differentiate within the classroom for different ability levels.
And is that being done?
That is being done. I will say that in certain areas, the feedback from teachers is that that can be very difficult. So I often have discussions with teachers in math, for instance. I had one the other day where, hey Jeff, there's, I got 24 kids in this class, if I could take the 12 highest achievers and separate them out, I could move at a much faster pace with them. And my answer to that is, yeah, I think you probably could. But is that really good for everybody in that class? And that's just a philosophical debate.
What about for 6th or 7th graders?
Right now, no acceleration for 6th.
No acceleration.
No acceleration for 7th. If the district were to want to entertain that, certainly I'd be open to the discussion. And I would point out my reservations with it, but certainly there's positives, depending on which group you're in.
And I think historically, so before coming to Sag Harbor, I worked at a school that was a test-in school in the city. And it was one that the kids were feeders for Bronx Science and Stuyvesant. It was a top middle school in New York City. And the way we accelerate it is exactly how we accelerate here, because the middle-school mind develops at a different rate. And some, usually in 8th grade, those abstract concepts click faster for certain kids than others, so that seems like an appropriate acceleration. We did not accelerate for all, and we also had special ed students in that school, because it was a big proponent of inclusion. And those kids were mixed with the highest kids that were going to Stuyvesant and Bronx Science. So it's just a philosophical thing, but at the same time, it worked in that building. And yes, when we were working and teaching, it was hard work, because differentiating instruction for a student that might not know their square roots up to 15, but somebody who you want to teach Euler's Formula to, it's a big gap. So you have to differentiate, and it's hard work, and a lot of work.
I mean, I just, just to close the loop on that discussion, and I'm familiar with the debate both about acceleration, and also there's a debate about grouping and whether that's appropriate or not, and the pros and cons. But I, speaking for myself, I think it would be helpful, if the recommendation is against the Middle Years Program, what other thing, what more can we be doing to increase the rigor for those students who want it in Grades 6 through 10? Because it seems like we can be doing more, and it seems like there's a surge in the community that both, that's why I think a lot of the folks in the community wanted to do this program going forward. And I've had a lot of people approach me and say how disappointed they were to hear that it may not be. And there's a concern about that. So speaking for myself, I think it would be helpful in making this decision, if we could hear specific things that we'd be doing to increase the rigor for the students in Grades 6 through 10.
Have we ever denied, I believe the answer is no. Because I know that if a child chooses in 11th and 12th to move into an IB class, not an IB diploma candidate, that they elect that themselves and move into it. So if someone chooses to go into Living Environment and not stay in 8th grade Science, we let them, correct?
Absolutely.
So technically, they can all accelerate themselves, and so can their parents, if they so choose, starting in a very early.
Yeah, I think Alex makes a good point. I mean, I think that's a reasonable ask, if you will.
Yeah, because in 8th grade, it's only in two subjects. And.
But I don't think we deny someone in another one if they wanted to. I don't know.
No, in social stu, in 8th grade, you can advance in social study, I mean, it's in Science and Math, and that's it. You don't, and it's still, you're with mostly your grade in those courses, but you can advance. But in the other classes, you can't. And we have, there's a, I mean, since I've been in the district, this has been a debate. And we track even in, you know, 3rd and 4th grade, and there are districts that do it, and there are districts that don't. We don't. There is a part of the population, at least since I've been in the district, that where you have parents that complain, "My kid's bored." They're the highest achievers, and they're bored.
I mean, I don't, Chris, I agree with you completely. I'm probably going to shop for saying the phrase G and T in here. But I think that's what a lot of the younger parents are concerned about when they get to 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, is that, you know, the Leave No Child Behind has kind of also morphed into something where maybe there is a group that's being left out. And if there's a better way to address that, I mean, this is really a different topic or a different meeting.
Slow down rather than left out.
Fourth.
Well, yeah, they had to be abandoned. No, and I would like to echo, I think Alex, the way you just put that is perfect. I think it would be helpful, I mean, you know, coming back to even the point of for 6th and 7th graders, I mean, you mentioned that you don't accelerate till 8th, but even, even if you guys could come back to us with some thinking and some recommendations, like, just an example, take that math teacher that you're mentioning, and I wonder if it was a 6th grade math teacher, and, you know, can that group of 12 be given extra work? Or extra, because if you've got some kids, for example, who are being given assigned homework that's supposed to last them a week, and they're doing it in 20 minutes, and then they have no homework for a week, because they knocked it all out, and it, you know, it's an issue. And I think that's just as much of a challenge as the kid who is struggling and he or she is, you know, in tears half the week, trying to struggle through that math homework. So, you know.
Are there any other questions? I think that at this time, we, I feel like we're getting close to the point where we can kind of weigh in and get the will of the board and give a direction as to next steps. Are there any specific questions that anybody would like more clarification on?
I have one IB-related question, that's not about the decision, but while we're on the topic, I'd just like to ask. The Theory of Knowledge course is the only course that's required specifically for the IB diploma. You have to have other categories, there's no one other common course, right? That every student has to take.
Well, we, in our school, we hard-toed two courses as HL, Higher Level. So every diploma candidate, two of their three higher levels are English and History of the Americas.
Okay. So, but I know that the Theory of Knowledge is kind of the course or the philosophy, right?
Right.
So I'm wondering, and it really challenges students to think, to really ask those deep questions of, what do you know and how do you know it, and how do you go through the exploration of confirming what you know and all that? Would we ever consider opening that to any student, regardless of whether they're diploma candidate or not? Because the feedback that I've heard from many parents and from students is that, that really shifted how they thought about knowledge. And I think it would benefit every student to potentially go through that process, and not just your diploma candidate. I mean, this is, I don't know how teachers feel about it, but I think, you know, I think it would prepare every child better for college, whether they can do the diploma or not, or choose to.
Yeah, we've had those discussions.
Yeah, we tried that, and it just.
We've never implemented. I just didn't know what the challenge was, and if there was a downside to testing.
I don't think there's a downside to trying it. You might not have the same level of success, because the motivation might be different with the population in the class.
But I'm not saying it has to be required, but just to open it up to anyone like any other course.
Sure.
Jay, do you have a question?
I have a question about fees. My understanding it's $200 grand a year for the entire program? Is that right?
That sounds very high.
A year?
That's if we pay for the assessment costs.
So that's $200 grand with the assessments?
No, yeah, that's $200, the 9, $9,800 is the annual fee, the $200,000 is for the assessment costs.
That are theoretically optional.
Theoretically optional, exactly.
And that's only for Grades 6 through 8?
Yeah.
That $200,000?
That doesn't include 9 and 10?
That might, there's a typo on there, I apologize, 6 through 10.
That's, that's if you choose to go with the assessments, though, which is an option.
And what is the cost without the assessments?
Their annual fee.
$9,800.
The assessments, are that much money?
No, 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 you just asked without the assessments.
No, 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 she asked, $9,800 if you were to go without the assessments. If you wanted to go with the assessments, it's roughly $200,000.
So what's the, is the registration per student, is that what the $9,800 is? Or is it on top of the $800?
That's a flat fee for paying.
So $9,800 is a flat fee, and then in addition to that, you'd pay $52 per student on top of that?
Yeah.
And is the, is the E-assessment a $74 per student, that's per student per class that they take?
Per student per test.
Per test. So that's, so there would be five tests a year?
Right.
Right? So five times, so you're talking about it was $400 per student for assessments alone per year?
$476.
What?
Yeah, around.
But we have to remember, the assessments are optional.
No, 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 I know, but that's, so that's where the heavy lifting is financially.
And is there any possibility what it would be for just 9 and 10?
We did that, that's around $66,000. And so I also have the Pearson enrollment next to it, so you can plug numbers.
Any other questions about the program?
Before we're asked to weigh in, do we have a recommendation either way from the superintendent? Because it's always good to hear that before we can make a decision. Do you know whether she's supportive of moving forward or not?
The last time we talked about it, she was clear that she's on the same page as the administrators, that she has concerns about the full implementation of the program.
And so the recommendation is to philosophically move forward with the parts that work for us, but not formally sign up for the program?
I don't want to speak for her, but that's my recollection from the last time we had the surrounding conversation.
Thank you.
Want to go first? Go for it, Alex.
So I think I said it already, but I'd like to reiterate. My preference would be before we make a decision on this, to hear some specifics from the administration. I think the diploma program has been universally perceived as a great success, and it appears the recommendation is to not go forward with the Middle Years Program, but I would like to hear specifics about what we would do to increase rigor for students in Grades 6 through 10, whether it's acceleration, or grouping, or gifted program, whatever that is. I think that would be helpful to hear.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I tend to agree with the administration. It does seem like there's a lot going on. I'm really curious to see what Dobbs Ferry does have to say about their program and how it's going, if we can get some sort of inkling on that. Also, I'm still, you know, into it for 9 and 10. I understand how complicated that breakdown would be, just for 9 and 10 as well. I don't know. I'm torn.
I was torn until tonight, so I really want to thank the administration and the teachers for coming in and weighing in. I feel like I understand it so much more than I did the last time we talked about it, because I remember feeling last time, like, specifically, what is it about the unit planner that's such a problem? And specifically, what are you talking about? And I just feel like I have wrapped my head around it a lot better tonight, so I certainly appreciate that. And I think hearing from the teachers weighing in on their, some of the things that they said really resonated with me, that the, one of them was from Mr. Malia, who said that the cost outweighs the value, that it's an unnecessary formality, and understanding that it's a framework, not necessarily a curriculum. New York State has standards, but they haven't prescribed a specific curriculum, so we can take whatever curriculum we like and adapt it to this way of thinking with the IB Middle Years, or sorry, with the IB diploma program, without necessarily having to conform to these planning processes and protocols. I'm in the field of education, so I understand what the UVD design is, that's what I coach, that I can understand that when you're shifting the way you plan a lesson, that that can be more work than it's worth, in the sense that now I have to just rethink the way I'm thinking about this that doesn't necessarily change anything in the classroom. So that made perfect sense to me, so I appreciate that. But I also appreciate when Ms. Ruth White Dunn talked about changing the way that they talk about the Revolutionary War. So instead of just teaching it, let's teach the same thing from a different perspective. And I think what I liked most about that is because we frequently equate rigor with acceleration, and it's not necessarily true. The quality in which we teach is so much more important than the speed at which we teach, that if we can, if we could have all of our teachers trained in IB program, I think that would, I mean, I think that would be a good use of our funds. When you're looking at these dollar amounts, is it, is it an option to send all of our teachers to IB training, so that they can all get that? And I'd love to get that TOK training, but maybe the board can get that. I just feel like if we're going to spend this money, there's better ways to spend it. Because some of the things that were percolating in my mind is, okay, so if we have a lot of teachers in the building that are trained on this, but not all of them, can we do in? teachers in the building that are trained on this, but not all of them, can we do internal turnkey, turnkey training? Can we send them to other training? So I, for me, yes, I would love to hear more specifics and things like that, but after hearing what I've heard tonight, I would completely support the administration's recommendation to not formally go to IB middle years, but yet maybe map out a roadmap of how we can get even more, get even more results, milk it as much as we can. I think it's a fantastic idea. So I want to thank everybody for their time on this.
I was here when we first teed up this potential idea, and I think there was a misunderstanding then that was cleared up dramatically tonight, so it was very helpful. And there's a misunderstanding in the community, as a board member, I misunderstood. I really did not understand that there wasn't a curriculum shift like there is in your diploma program. So, and I think had, you know, there's no way to know until you peel back the layers by going through the process. Had we known in the beginning that and saying that it's not a curriculum difference at all, and it really is, and it's, you know, you're really weighted down in the administrative tasks that don't change the texture of teaching in the classroom, then we might not even have gone this far down the field, so to speak. I am a little concerned, the benefit of having a program, and I don't think we have to have it, I support the recommendation for tonight, but the benefit of a program is kind of what gets measured is what gets done, and then you do have the rigor of kind of the external process of saying, are we on track? And so I think we've made great strides in trying to institutionalize it, you know, for instance, in some of the middle school years. I am concerned, though, that without having something institutionalized, we're not going to consistently propagate this throughout all those five years. And so I would challenge, challenge us as a board and the administration to make sure that we create a structure that where we are really holding ourselves to task, that we are doing this successfully in all five grades, without having to be part of the program. Not the administrative piece, but the philosophy of how children are learning and how we're teaching them. Because I think it's a little bit spotty right now, and to your point, we're a small school, it makes it harder in that sense. But the only way I think we're going to get the support and confidence of the parent population that was on board with this, is if you can look them in the eye and say, we don't need this to do great work, and to do this kind of work in our, you know, in those five grades. And to do that, we really have to have it, I think, you know, be really pretty structured. If that makes sense.
Anybody else ready? Just one more.
Yeah, I, literally, whatever they said, I don't believe it, you know, Jeff and Brittany, no offense, it's been so helpful to you, but it was really, really helpful to hear from the teachers. I think it just, you know, for those of us who are not in your business, it just helps us understand it and better. And I think the whole shift, Chris, as you were saying, that the way of thinking versus curriculum, because I really thought it was a different curriculum, to be honest. And I think, Alex, you know, you and I have had offline conversations, and so, but I, and I agree with you, Diana, you know, I really want to support what the teachers are telling us and what the administrators, and so I agree. But that said, I also really agree with Alex. I would love to hear, you know, a sort of specific plan for how can we address this stuff in a way that the community will go, okay, got it, yep, it's being addressed. And one of the things I want to just throw out there, and please don't freak out, I know, it's not about the environment, definitely, is, I know other schools...
Sleeping later in the morning?
No.
Charper grass?
Other schools do student surveys about, you know, we just heard tonight from students about the survey on the drug and alcohol use. I would love to see a survey in our school about what they think about their teachers, what they think about their classes, because to me, at the end of the day, I really don't care about the test. What I love to hear is when I hear my kid or other people's kids talk so excited about certain teachers who were here tonight, or what they learned in their class. To me, it's about excitement for learning, something that blew their mind away in school, so that they enjoy going to school, they like, to me, that's the best measure of what we're doing right. And because then that means not only we've got kids who are learning, we've got kids who are healthy and happy. So to me, that's, that's the test that I want us to ace. And so, I mean, not anything tied to teacher evaluations or anything like that, but truly something that we can get a sense of what's working, what's not, and that we can, particularly in the middle years, you know, and address some of the concerns that parents have and students have. And, because I know also, as the kids advance, at least I've certainly heard that from the community, they get more and more excited. But yet we do, you're absolutely right, Alex, we have a group that keeps leaving, and they're leading greater numbers. I do think part of that is a demographic shift in this community, you know, you have more people in the community who can afford to go. So you're going to see that in, when that happens. But you know what, for, it would be lovely if those folks would go, why would we go anywhere else? So I would love to see us tackle that.
Thank you very much for your presentation. That's what I was going to say, thank you. Thank you, Chase and Ruth.
Can you weigh in?
Can I weigh in? Do I have to?
If you were okay with not pursuing my middle years, you would be the fourth, so yes, it would be the will of the board, so yes, I'm asking you to weigh in.
Well, no, I was going to say that, I would be okay, yes, I would be okay with not pursuing it, but candidly, I think that before we do that, we should hear alternatives, as Alex put it, because I think that the community, if it took us as a board this long to understand this, then I know that the community doesn't yet. And it's not fair, because it's as if we are ignoring what they're asking for, but maybe they don't understand it's not a change in curriculum. So I, yes, I would support not moving ahead, but I have a PS to the, to the no. That's, that's my opinion.
Not to speak twice, but it sounded like the administration was on board with...
They are.
Coming back with alternative suggestions.
Absolutely. And maybe one of the things that we can tackle is maybe figuring out how to address differentiation, if that's something that teachers are struggling with. Thank you.
I'll move through this pretty quickly. Red Ribbon Week was the 23rd through the 27th. We had events at the middle school and high school level this year. We had the Natural High Speaker, who was really good. He presented the evening of the 26th and the 27th, connected with the kids very well. So hopefully, we can have him back in the future at some point. Middle School Dodge Tournament, Dodgeball Tournament on the 27th, College Application Week, the end of October, I think I touched on that at the last meeting. These are just some photos. Ms. Carriero arranged for this, supervised it.
Can I just interrupt about the dodgeball? What?
She's like, I don't understand why it's dodgeball, a part of women's...
Okay, hold on, I'll tell you why. First of all, I just want to say a huge shout out to the administrators who organized this, and Eric Bramoff, who I think did an amazing job. The place, the gym was transformed, and music was going, Eric was on the microphone, the kids were having a blast. And as I've heard Eric say before, you know, a big part of prevention and wellness is making sure the kids have fun things to do, so that...
Dodgeball!
It was awesome.
Kill the kids.
Yeah, it was like, we...
I think the objective was that because it is Red Ribbon Week, and we're trying to promote healthy habits and natural highs, it was another place for our kids to go on a Friday night, instead of just going home and playing Xbox or...
It's the most popular, well-attended event of the year that is voluntary for students. Every year, it is the most popular one.
It was great. I would love to see us do it more, and I would love, I mean, I think I...
I'm sorry, what's the interruption? Why are we interrupting?
Because I just wanted to give kudos to the people who know.
Oh, and who has a butt, because that January has a problem with dodgeball?
She's good, she's good.
Wasn't there a movie with the old girl?
It's Dodgeball.
Okay. Anyway, I, you know, wait, let me get some of my... They were so good, they did such a great job. I hope they could try to actually do that more, and I would love to see you guys do it where literally all the kids' hands go on a bingo ball, and wheel, and you're, you sign those teams out randomly. But anyway, it was just awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. So these are the pictures of some of the doors. So each, each classroom with, that's actually not a student on the right, that's Ms. Taylor. But the students decorated their classrooms. These are just some pictures of kids on different days, this was pajama day. I told you guys the story, when the kids were paying, they were putting on their clothes in the morning, dressed to impress. This was the mix-up at lunch day, which is, we should probably do that more often. This is the speaker I mentioned before. This is his opening activity, where he has the kids start on chairs, and then he pulls out the chairs from underneath them, and they support each other. He was pretty funny, actually, he was a stand-up comedian as well, so he was, he was good.
Is that our auditorium?
It is.
I've never seen the screen down, go ahead.
That's the evening with him.
Yeah. Some team-building activities, schoolers. They were doing this in town. Upcoming events.
Can I ask a question about the Red Hulbert ribbon idea? At the weekend, the activities there, we saw the data tonight that between eighth grade and tenth grade, we see that kind of acceleration, right, in a lot, in several of the categories? Do we have programs specifically targeted to those kind of years where we see that there seems to be these big behavioral shifts? Because I know in the middle school, we do, you know, it's just...
Yeah, we have, we have...
Like ninth grade?
Through hugs, and the person who teaches the courses and pushes into the classrooms was here tonight, we do that six through twelve.
Okay.
We do. And that's the evidence-based botting program. But despite our efforts, you see the stats, and I just sent out a letter to the community, I think about two weeks ago, on vaping.
Vaping. And vaping's not just nicotine.
Right.
The vaping, I'm sorry?
That was expressed in the letter.
Yeah.
We just use the scientific term from there on.
You want to talk about the Rude Goldberg science...
Oh, so our new, our new sixth grade science teacher, Mr. Rainey, took this initiative all on itself, and the students are working in groups, and they are trying to do a simple task by doing a bunch of different tasks to get to that simple task, that's my short end of it. They also have done, so they're going to present their projects of doing these simple tasks to everybody this week. And then they also have videos that they've been uploading as well through the process and the scientific...
So then we're through Bay Street, Literature Live, we're taking the high school to see, all students at the high school, to see Death of a Salesman on the ninth, on the ninth of November. Veterans Day, school's closed, the high school fall play coming up the 16th through the 18th, you can't take it with you, and the times are listed underneath. And the 17th is our next conversation with administrators and Mr. Malone.
Ms. Reynoso.
Ms. Reynoso.
Thank you.
So just to share some of the things that we're doing at the elementary school, Project Adventure continues, but this time it was with our fourth grade students. That was on campus, so they didn't actually travel like the fifth graders did to Camp Quinipet. It was held the entire day on the field at our school. Partners in Print, the Halloween Parade, if any of you had a chance to attend that, it was phenomenal and so well-attended by community members.
That was the cutest thing.
It was so cute. It was such a treat for me to experience that as a first time. And I said to Mr. Malone, how great for us to be able to fit in part of our workday to attend something like this. It's like, it's so amazing.
Kakadore pit stop was the cutest thing I'll ever see in my life.
Yeah, yeah, it was such, such a great event, such a beautiful thing, the music, and we did morning program at the end of the day as opposed to at the start of the day, so that was also a nice way to switch things up a bit. Food drive kickoff, our teachers did a wrap as far as bringing food in and why we need to do that, and really remember those in need with Thanksgiving coming up. Upcoming events, Veterans Day, on Thursday, we'll have a breakfast, where we'll serve breakfast to veterans, they all needed to come to our school for morning program. We have our caps for kale that was launched last year, so a special add-on this year will be Ms. Landy presenting to the veterans the caps that were collected and how that was created into a bench in their honor, as well as a second bench that was set to a low-income school in Michigan. Vision screening, last day for the food drive, and early dismissal as a result of parent-teacher conferences that are coming up. Excuse me. Photos, so here we have Project Adventure, the Halloween Parade. The photo, the top-left photo, are potential incoming kids from St. Harbor, just random, so cute. The student with the pizza said, hey, Ms. Reynoso, look, I'm a pizza. It's so adorable. Here we have some faculty participating. Mr. Neeland with the sign that says, Frankie, thanks for all the memories for Kakadore. Ms. Grant's t-shirt worn to sparkle and shine. Pre-kindergarten performance, pre-kindergarten, this is the PM class. And just a reminder that it's not really all about sweets at the elementary school, there was really a bunch of in-class celebrations that took place focusing on healthy, healthy aspects and healthy choices. So here's just a few slides from things that we saw in our school, you know, like the clementines and grapes, and fun activities centered away from sweets.
I think those are doughnuts, isn't that? And I just circled them and said, what are they?
They're clementines!
They're not doughnuts.
Sorry, I'm shy.
Celeri in the middle.
Then somebody snuck doughnuts in the elementary school. Go ahead.
This was from a field trip today, actually. Kindergartners had the opportunity to board the South Ferry, and really just practice what they're learning in class as far as boating and shipping, and they actually got to man and captain the ferry, which is really neat. And this is our school participating, all grades going to Brookton Firehouse to practice exit drills in the home. And Mr. Bramoff?
The theme of the day for athletics is its playoffs, and we're going to need a new, a new trophy case after this fall. Just be very brief, field hockey is our county champs, golf is our league champ and tourney, and league tournament champs, swimming is our league champions, first time in history, as well as golf is the first time in over fifty years. Volleyball is going to play for the sexual championship tomorrow at three o'clock at Suffolk Community Brentwood. Cross-country is going to go all the way up to Rochester, and we had four people qualify for that. I was at the cross-country meet this, this past week, and it was, it was pretty cool. I saw, I saw some of our administrators there, and one of the administrators said, you know, Mr. Bramoff, if you can make it to the finish line, you have to have sneakers on. And so I learned I had my shoes on. It was, it was my first time at the cross-country county championships, it was, it was quite the event. I also attended the golf county championships, which also was a tremendous event, and not to be outdone, our soccer team is going to the final four for the first time in school history. Very exciting. Comprehensive Whaler Weekly will go out tomorrow describing everything that is going on in the world of athletics. And tonight, we held our parents' meeting for winter athletics for middle school. And I believe it's Mr. Fisher's turn.
Are you doing a spectator bus Saturday for the soccer game?
I'm going to do the team bus as of now, and I'm going to solidify all those details, and I'll meet with the administrative team and decide what, what capacity we have to provide with. Okay?
Where's the soccer game on Saturday, by the way?
Soccer game is at Middletown High School, roughly three and a half hours, and it's, we play at four o'clock against Lansing, who is the number two team in the state, we are currently ranked number three.
Stephanie, what was your question?
If you're going to do a... If you're going to do a spectator bus Saturday to the boys' soccer game.
Just my take as the principle, because Eric came to me earlier today, is we have run spectator buses to Long Island Championships before, knowing that we were going to go to the game and back. And those, those spectator buses were contingent upon a certain number of students signing up and willing, and expressing a willingness to pay a nominal amount, I think it was like five bucks. Running a bus to the state championships is an entirely different deal because if we win Saturday, we play Sunday. So what we would have to do is, is run that bus back and then run another one the next day or arrange for people to stay overnight, which kicks it to a whole other level. So I would say the likelihood of a spectator bus, I'm sorry to speak for you, Eric, happening is pretty minimal. Unless it's privately organized, which has happened in the past, where parents have gotten together and gotten a bus on their own.
I didn't want to compete because I'm going to make a five-dollar profit on my spectator buses. They'll go on Saturday, they'll stay in overnight, that's coming home Sunday. So as long as I know I'm good, I'm out of here. My pickup's across the street, though. I won't use your driveway. Actually, I always use Matt's driveway when I do that.
Is there a way to consider a spectator bus for at least Saturday? No, Saturday's a epic. They're definitely going on Saturday. And again, it seems to be, at least from the Facebook chatter, I've read some real serious interest going up there. Now, the challenge is, if you have a spectator bus and kids are going out without adults, then we have to have adult supervision go with them. And then, you know, so I-
So there's a couple of considerations. Number one, if it was a spectator bus and there were adults on the bus, I, I would not support us sponsoring that because then we're responsible for the adults' conduct as well.
And for the record, in the past, there's been issues with that, so there's a reason to be concerned, just for the record.
Right. If we were just going to run one for students, then the prerequisite, if you will, would be that we would have to have a certain number of chaperones be willing to do it. And what I said to Eric earlier today is if we were going to run one just for Saturday, the first step would be to post it to the teacher's unit and see if we could get chaperones. And then once we get it, then the next step, if we got chaperones, the next step would be to assess student interest in terms of a willingness to pay X amount of dollars. Because it's expensive. I mean, Eric did some preliminary research. It would be north of a thousand dollars.
Do other districts-
More than a thousand for the bus?
Right.
Bus and chaperones or just the bus?
Just the bus.
Do other districts, public schools, other districts, when they go to states, provide a bus for free to students to go?
I can speak from experience on that one. Yes, it's done in certain circumstances. It's probably not the norm. When I was at our neighboring district and we won the basketball state championship, this very discussion of going even further, you had to go up on a Saturday and then you had to come up back. You had, everybody rode the bus back to Long Island, so six hours, and then they came back up the next day. It was tremendous cost. I believe the spectator bus was over $5,000 for those two buses. So it was a-
So some districts provided for free and some districts don't?
Right.
I, I wouldn't know of any district that would provide. Maybe, maybe some private districts, for example, Storybrooke has provided spectator buses to volleyball games. So.
Thank you. Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
I, I just wanted to mention a couple of the, uh, the events taking place with the new distance learning equipment. Actually, can't say new anymore. It's not exactly new. But just this morning over at the elementary school, there was a great free video conference and it was kind of neat. It was between John Regan's class over here and a school upstate. And what they did was, it was, um, they, they shared information electronically about the design of a robot and each class had to design what the other school had described. And then because we have the video conference equipment, once they all got together, they were able to actually show their designs to see how close they got to one another's work. So it was really pretty exciting. The kids really enjoy doing the video conference. They enjoy seeing people on the other end and the, the interaction that takes place. And the, um, one on the bottom is just an upcoming event that I'm not sure if any of our teachers are going to take part in, but I just shared that with them about another event. It's actually only for pre-K through first grade. So hopefully some, some teachers will take advantage of this one as well, where they get to pair up with students and, and exchange information as well. But it's all based around the book Brown Bear, Brown Bear, What Do You See? And there's a tie-in with that, so just wanted to bring that to your attention. These are some pictures I took this morning, I'm sorry, of the kids participating. So they're watching the classroom the other side. And then here, they're holding up the monster that was, that was produced on our side. And if you look at the screen, you can see the monster that they produced on their end as well. They actually are pretty, pretty similar.
I just have two slides here highlighting some of the work that has, has been done just outside on the retaining wall. You'll see that there are a lot of transfers on the agenda tonight. The majority of the budget transfers are because of our new salary codes that already was pound codes that we instituted for the new year. But one of the budget transfers was directly related to this retaining wall. When the work got done on the athletic field and the stairs were installed outside the middle school gym, we found that the retaining wall just was not strong enough to hold up all of that weight. So you can see our new retaining wall is beautiful. They actually brought the brick all the way to the building before there actually was no brick here. And you can see the stones were just laying on top of each other, kind of glued together, as opposed to these, which are actually trenched into the dirt. Gravel was put into these little sections in order to promote the drainage. So this is something that we just got done and it looks beautiful outside. We also have Marcus, who is starting this week. His first day is Wednesday, November 8th. He comes to us with many years of experience, directly school-related experience, which is wonderful. He has five years as a facilities administrator. So he's done more, he's worked in Greenport Southhold on the North Shore and he's also worked in the East High School District. And he also spent five years as a construction manager. So he managed almost a $9 million project for Greenport and also a $100 million project for Brentwood Schools. He worked for a company in Hop Hop called School Construction Consultants. So he should definitely be able to come in and just, you know, just hit the ground running when he starts. So that is the end of this presentation. I'm going to actually start the reserves presentation, which we're going to try to do very quickly. So I'm going to hand these out and we are not going to go through every slide.
Every slide?
Because he did send us out to the board here, Christine, that's for you. Earlier in the week, and I'm sure they review every slide. And then I have, well, this isn't exactly the same presentation. The first one was a graph. So. So every year since I've been here, we have adopted a reserves plan because this is something that our auditors, the state controller, really feels is very important, especially if you are trying to maintain, build your reserves. So I'm going to get started. On the agenda tonight, you'll see there is a resolution to adopt the reserves plan and also confirm the balances. So I think we all know why having reserves is very important. Really, there's very strict rules on how you can spend and save taxpayer dollars. So the reserves are one way that we can set aside funds to hopefully help us in the future for any sort of unexpected emergencies. If we find that our tax levy limit is very low one year, we can go ahead and tap into our reserves. So it's a very, it's, it's a great thing to have for many reasons. And we're going to talk about how it affects Moody ratings also in a little while. But the state controller's office, we, um, they just passed some legislation that affects our reserves. And they advanced this legislative proposal to increase transparency in school district fiscal operations. And it passed December of 16, last year, and it became effective this year. So for the next budget cycle, there will be additional requirements put upon us related to reserves. So the new law requires that a board resolution is in place for any, all payments or transfers to reserve funds. And we already do this, so that's, that's fine. But the second requirement is a little more complicated. What they require is that a new schedule of reserve funds is added to the property tax report card. And according to the state education department, who is tasked with implementing this new requirement, they have developed a new property tax report card and a schedule of reserves. So this is the old property tax report card, the one that we had to fill out for every, every, during every budget season, we fill this out. It's included in our budget statement. It goes out to the public. And you can see on the bottom, you list what you think your actual reserves would be at the end of the year and what you think your estimated would be at the end of the budget cycle. And you just include totals here. But now they're actually saying that you need to add the schedule and you need to confirm what your ending balance would be as of 3/31/18, which would be the third quarter of our school year. And we would also have to list the intended use for all of our reserves in the 18, 19 school year. So we do, we do that every year in our reserves plan. But now this actually is going to get added to the property tax report card, which is right down here. This has to get sent up to New York State and it has to be included in our budget statement. So beginning with the 18, 19 budget cycle, all of this information is now required. And these are just some suggestions from the state education department on how we come up with some of those balances.
So that's a good interview question. If, if somebody interviews your replacement and they don't know that that has to be incorporated in next year's budget-
About the new law, there you go.
Okay.
Drawback. So let's talk a little bit now about Sag Harbor and our historical fund balance and reserves. And you can see that the district itself was in a pretty scary situation, you know, back in eight, oh, eight, nine. You can see that their unassigned fund balance was $66,818. These reserves, when you see totals here, all of that money is not spendable. Your reserve for encumbrances, for instance, this money or this, this, this reserve or fund balance set aside is for contracts that have already been awarded. So this money is already spent. When you look at these advances to the school cafeteria fund years ago, that money is also spent and earmarked for other purposes. Appropriated fund balance is also spent and earmarked for the purposes. So between eight, nine and nine, 10, you can see that you went from $66,000 in fund balance. You were able to add to your fund balance that year. But then you had a deficit of almost three, over $300,000 going into nine, 10. And your fund balance was directly affected by that deficit and your fund balance went down to $308,000, which is extremely scary because this is the only emergency money at that time that you had on the books. And if something happened throughout the year, if a revenue source somehow dwindled or if you had new students come in and had to arrange for new program, you would be making mid-year cuts to programs to, to account for that. So through the years, we have been able to add to our reserves. And you can see that we ended last year, 16, 17, with total fund balance of $12,755,958. So we really have come a long way. And this is just an example of a news article that I was able to find from December of '09, where it says Sag Harbor oversends our school budget, the surplus dwindles. And the independent audit basically revealed that the district overspent its budget by $362,000. So fast forward, and this is Christine's article. Eight years and you can see that, you know, we really have done a lot to just make sure that the district's financial condition is so much better than it was. And one of the things that the auditor did say when she was here is that she's happy to see the district's funding reserves, utilizing and appropriating reserves and incorporating them into the budget. So we have been actively monitoring all of our reserves. We have not been using them as a parking lot like some other districts do, where they do just save, save, save. And they do kind of put that money away and never spend it. But we really do spend our reserves and appropriate them thoughtfully. This is just another way of looking at how our reserves have built up throughout the years. You can see on the top of the screen, you have your budget, your budget and then your actual spending. Then you have your revenue budget, your actual revenue, and you can see where the operating surplus comes from. So when someone asks, what did we end up with at the end of the year? They just can't ask, what was the budget side like? Because the budget is made up of revenues also and the budget is not 100% funded by tax levy. So the surplus is generated by combining the two sides together. And at the end of the year, we did end up with $1,823,000 to add to our reserves. But when you go back and you look at, and you start analyzing the tax levy compared to actual spending, you'll see that in all of these years above, our tax levy at one point funded 99% of our budget. And you can see this, that it, the tax levy does make up most of our budget, but we also receive some state aid. We also appropriate savings and we also have other revenue sources. So as you look at these later years, you can see that this, this has been building up. So for the 13, 14 school year, we had $771,000 that we were addition, that was additional to the tax levy supporting the budget. And you can see from the past year, 16, 17, we were able to bring that number up to $1,579,000. And that's mainly due to enhancing revenues throughout the years. And this is just a breakdown of how we have been using our reserves, how we have added to them, appropriated also from them. And it shows the reconciliation of where this $1.8 million derives from. So our year-to-year difference in reserves, I just want to talk a little bit about what we actually have and what is already spent. Out of this $12,755,000, I've already explained that $228,000 of that is already reserved for encumbrances, which means orders are already placed in that amount and that money is not spendable to us anymore. Our employee benefit accrued liability reserve, we have not added to that and it stayed fairly constant. Our retirement reserve, though, out of the $2,166,350, we actually appropriated $500,000 towards the funding of this year's budget. So after, at the end of this year, that retirement reserve balance should go down to $1.6 million, which is roughly three years' worth of our ERS retirement costs. And the auditors did feel that that was definitely a, you know, a good, a good number or an appropriate amount, have set aside in that reserve. Facilities capital reserve, on here, at the end of the year, we had a balance of $2,632,143. But we have to remember that out of that, we have to deduct the windows that we are getting replaced at Pearson and the windows that were replaced at the elementary school. So our balance really after the window project is roughly about $1.8 million. So if you add up all of the differences in what was spent and what was appropriated for the current year, you really don't have the whole $12,755. It really is more like $10,922. This facilities capital reserve is a reserve that I feel definitely needs to increase going forward. So to, you know, having that $1,798 or $1.8 million set aside for future projects is fantastic. But you do still have a building condition survey that has over $6 million worth of repairs that are listed in that survey that need to get done eventually. I know the air conditioning was a big question this year. Just to provide air conditioning to Pearson would be $2.3 million and at the elementary school, it's about $900,000. So that 2.6, to me, really does need to get supplemented going forward. So that two point six, to me, really does need to get supplemented going forward. So why is it important to have reserves? One of the, another reason why is really because it directly affects our Moody's ratings. Our Moody's rating has gone from AA, from A1, all the way now up to AA2. It has been upgraded for several reasons, and one of the biggest reasons really was our healthy reserve balances. Factors that could lead to an upgrade would be a significant increase in reserves and liquidity. Factors that could lead to a downgrade would be deterioration of reserves. So this is another reason why the reserves are so important. And in February of sixteen, we were recently upgraded from AA3 to AA2. This has a direct result on our debt service payments, on interest for all of our future borrowings, any, any funds that we may refinance, it would have a big impact on. We recently had another Moody's comment issued in September of this, of just two months ago. And they, during this period, this comment period, they did say that Sag Harbor has a very strong credit position, and its AA2 rating is, is slightly above the median range. The district's financial position is very healthy, relatively strong in comparison to its assigned rating of AA2. And it goes on and on, and it really talks about how we really are in a better position than the AA2. So we questioned them, and asked them, can you explain why we didn't get upgraded this time around? And they sent us their scorecard, and the Moody's scorecard actually shows that our unadjusted outcome is really AA1, which would be an upgrade, and that would help us going forward when we issue new debt service. We spoke to the Moody's analyst, and he did say that he, that after receiving our financial statements that were just issued, they would go ahead and reevaluate our position, and our fiscal agent and I are very, we're pretty much positive that our, that we will be receiving an upgrade again during our next comment period.
So, so Jennifer?
You go, girl. Did you get that in writing before you leave?
I, I, I'm telling you, I was like, it shows AA1, why are we AA2?
Because it's gonna go back down when you leave. It's gonna be a deep minus, so don't wait.
Jennifer said it so beautifully. So, so if we get upgraded, what is the difference? It doesn't, it doesn't change the, the, what we pay now, only in what we borrow in the future, or does it change who we're gonna pay now?
No, well, we borrow, every year, we borrow our TAN, our tax anticipation note. Interest rates are rising, so I can tell you that that would be affected. Our bond anticipation note that we have annually, we, to get a note to purchase the building, to purchase Stella, we're eventually gonna go out, and we're gonna bond that six point nine million dollars. That would save probably, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars going forward on all of our debt service if we can get a better bond rating. So, you know, there's just a fine line on how much should we keep in reserves, how much should our, how, how, should our reserves be increased, should they be decreased? You know, it's, it's just such a fine line, because everything is so connected, and debt service is huge. With rising interest rates, that is a huge cost for us going forward.
I, I guess, because I remember the last time it was upgraded, I think you helped figure out that we were gonna save over three hundred thousand dollars with that upgrade. So this is real material money that, that makes a big difference.
Yeah, definitely. This is, you know, I, I can say, just with your TAN alone, the difference was probably thirty thousand dollars in interest from one year to another. And, you know, that's to support staff, employee salary. So when you put it in those terms, you really understand that it, it's important to keep up the credit rating and keep it up as high as possible. So I am not gonna go through every single slide in our actual reserves plan, but for every reserve that we do have, we go into detail as to the creation, the purpose, how we're going to monitor the reserve going forward, the funding level, the funding methods, balance at the end of sixteen seventeen, our recommended balance for the new year, and also, of course, any recommendations going forward. So I'm gonna just touch on a couple of the reserves that changed over time, or that maybe should change going forward. And we're gonna start with the repair reserve. The repair reserve is fairly new to the district. It was just created in May of two thousand fifteen. And this reserve is very important, considering in the building condition survey, there is a whole list of items that could be, that this, this repair reserve could fund, the repair or the improvement of many of those items in that survey. So we, we look at this reserve every year. Right now, the funding level was set at two point five million dollars. Future funding of this reserve is authorized by the Board of Education through budgetary appropriations or year-end surplus, an amount not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand in any school year. So we did add seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to this reserve at June thirty of seventeen, so our actual balance is now one million five hundred and two dollar, uh, two thousand dollars. But if you can see down in the bottom on the note, we actually spent seven hundred and forty-seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars from this reserve. So we are really, really close to that two point five million dollar maximum. You cannot replenish funds that are already spent from a reserve. So at the end of the seventeen eighteen school year, you're not going to be able to add another seven fifty to this reserve. You're actually only gonna be able to add two hundred and fifty thousand more to this reserve, so not to exceed the two point five million. So this is a reserve that you definitely want to keep an eye on, and you definitely want to look at whether or not this maximum should be increased going forward. Another reserve is the retirement contribution reserve, and I talked a little bit about it, that we did appropriate five hundred thousand from this reserve to fund this year's retirement expense. So when you look at the total that's in this reserve as of June thirty of two thousand seventeen, we had two point one million dollars in the reserve, and at the end of the two thousand seventeen eighteen year, we're, it's probably gonna be down to the one million six sixty-six, which our ERS expense was roughly four hundred and forty-four thousand last year. And once we get down to this one point six million dollar balance, we would feel that the reserve is adequately funded at that point, should not be increased. But any future appropriations from this reserve, or any future use of this reserve, should be considered only when necessary and replenished shortly thereafter. This reserve cannot be used to fund any portion of our New York State Teachers Retirement System bill. A lot of people feel, think that because it's a retirement reserve, we could use it for both ERS, our ERS Employee Retirement System bill and our teachers' bill, but we can't. And we just received some concerning news about the teachers' retirement system. It looks as though we're going to have a rate increase for the eighteen nineteen budget year. Our current rate is nine point eight percent of payroll. And it looks as though that rate is gonna go up anywhere from seven point one percent to twelve point two percent. So just to give you a little bit of an idea of how this is gonna affect us going forward, we spent, our TRS actual expense for sixteen seventeen was one point nine million dollars. That was at eleven point seven two percent rate. Our rate went down for the current school year, and our TRS budget this year is actually one million seven sixty-eight. So our budget for TRS was reduced significantly. If it does increase by twelve point two percent, you're looking at an additional two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars that you're going to need to fund this bill in eighteen nineteen. And that's a huge chunk of tax levy. Our tax levy increased from sixteen seventeen to seventeen eighteen, our tax levy increase was one point two million. So two hundred and sixteen thousand out of that one point two million would be huge, and it would lead to, it could lead to cuts in other areas. There is no law or no reserve that allows us to set aside funds for these expenses, these unplanned or out-of-your-control type of expenses. Another reserve I want to touch upon is the facilities capital reserve. That was originally created in two thousand eleven. It has a ten-year life. I spoke a little bit about it before. The amount authorized is not to exceed five million dollars. If you look at the funding methods, we are authorized to put up to five hundred thousand dollars a year into this reserve at the end of the year from, from surplus funds. Our actual balance at June thirty of seventeen was two point six million. But as I said earlier, with the window project, that is gonna reduce this reserve, and this may be another reserve you may want to think about increasing going forward, and increasing the actual amount that can be deposited from surplus at year end. And then the last reserve I want to just review with you is the transportation fleet capital reserve, which is brand new. The voter has actually just approved this reserve this past May. The amount of the reserve would not exceed two million dollars, and the probable, the probable term of this reserve is fifteen years. At the end of the sixteen seventeen school year, we were able to actually fund almost the full amount of this reserve. So we were able to set aside, which included four hundred thousand that was already in the reserve, we added to this reserve, and our balance June thirty of seventeen is one million nine hundred and one thousand, which is wonderful. That's roughly nineteen big buses. In the next budget cycle for eighteen nineteen, I know that some of our buses do need to be replaced, so this is something that you could use to replace those buses. It does require voter approval, so the voters would, this would be an extra proposition on the ballot, and they would have to approve the use of this reserve. But I know there's at least two buses that need to get, that need to be replaced using those funds. So now we're gonna move on from the reserves plan to our tax levy and tax rate impact for both towns. This was our current year voter-approved budget, so our tax levy increase was three point four nine percent. That was definitely, that was under our limit. Our limit was actually three point eight six percent. And our tax levy was under the limit by a hundred and thirty-one thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars. For the sixth year in a row, we were able to stay below the tax cap and maintain all programs. But our tax levy, you can see, this is just an exa, uh, this is just showing all the data that is involved in calculating our tax levy limit every year, and it just shows the six years that we were under the cap. And you can see that we've been under by, you know, at least eleven thousand two hundred and forty-four, but for the current year, we were actually under by a hundred and thirty-one. So we have been trying to do our best to, really, really, the board has tried to do their best with all the information provided, to come up with a tax levy that they feel the community would sustain and would, would support. And when you look at the budget approval ratings, we have received very good ratings, percentage of approval. So back when the budget was being developed, we had to come up with the impact of what that three point four nine percent would be. So we said to the taxpayers that if the assessed values stay the same, this budget, the seventeen eighteen budget, would cost the town of East Hampton residents approximately a hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-six cents per year, and town of Southampton residents approximately a hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty cents per year. But the assessed values are now in, and we also know the new equalization rate for East Hampton. And you can see Southampton's assessed value has gone up. It has gone, increased by four hundred and twenty-three million two hundred and seventy-five and thirty-two. Town of East Hampton has increased slightly. Town of Southampton's rate is actually gonna go down again for another, this is, I think this is like the fourth year in a row that their rate's actually gone down. So if you look at your tax bill and your assessed value has not changed, meaning you have not improved your home in any way, you have not made, you know, any external, internal changes, and your assessed value is the same, you're actually gonna see a tax rate decrease if you're a resident of the town of Southampton. Your rate is gonna go from four point ninety-two down to four point seventy-seven. For East Hampton residents, that's not going to be true, since their equalization rate actually went down from point five nine percent to point five seven percent. What happens is, by reducing the equalization percentage, it basically means that their assessed value is actually that much less than what their full value would be, but we're still predicting a much lower tax increase than we did when the budget was being developed. So for the town of East Hampton, back when the budget was being developed, we were assuming the rate, the dollar change in taxes would be a hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-six cents. This is for a home valued approx, a little over a million dollars. And now, it looks as though the rate is gonna go from eight thirty-three eighty-eight to eight fifty forty-seven, and that increase would look like a hundred and six dollars and eighteen cents for the, for the, for a home valued at that same point. And you could see the equalization change here. Last year, that home was valued at one million eighty-four thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars, and by reducing the equalization rate, this year, that same home is now valued at one million one hundred and twenty-two thousand eight hundred and seven dollars. So they are gonna see a little slight increase to their tax bill. But as I have discussed in the past about the tax credits available for staying within the cap, we did comply with the tax cap in seventeen eighteen. So if these taxpayers who have income less than two hundred and seventy-five thousand, they will receive a rebate based on Basic Star. And the Basic Star amount is two hundred and ninety-eight dollars. For East Hampton, Enhanced Star is six hundred and thirty-five dollars. So under the law, if their income falls within any of these categories, they will receive money back on their tax bill. Enhanced Star residents will receive about seventy-six dollars back on their tax bill.
How old do you have to be to get there?
Enhanced Star, you definitely have to be over sixty, I can't, sixty-something? I can't remember, but I could get back to you on that.
No, it's just, it's gotta...
And that's it. I, I kind of try to make this as quick as possible, as fast as possible, and if anybody has any questions, please let me know. I'm a little tired.
Is this documented public?
Uh, yes. It's actually gonna be posted online tomorrow, and I gave a copy to Christine, so anyone can go ahead and review it and ask any questions they want. So I was told, because this was my last board meeting, that I was, I should have a drop-the-mic moment, but I'm not gonna do that, because I know how much these microphones actually cost. I just want to say, I just want to thank the board. I want to thank the board for volunteering for this really difficult job, and you guys just, you do such an amazing job, and you really care so much about the community and our students, that it's just, it's amazing to just sit here and watch you. I have to thank administration. I've loved working with them for the past few years, and it's just been wonderful to see, you know, all of the amazing programs that we have in the school district. I went to that parade on Halloween, and I, I told Matt, I said, I can't believe we do this. This is like, schools don't do stuff like this. But it was really wonderful. And, and Mrs. Graves, she's been a delight to work with for the past three and a half years, and my staff. I am going to miss my staff the most, so I think my last day, we'll just have like a little bit of crime fest in my office, but anyway. And thank you, of course, to the taxpayers and to all of the other staff in the school district for supporting the budget, supporting me, and making my time here, just, you know, it's been a wonderful learning experience, so thank you, everyone.
And I want to say thank you, because when you came to the district, the district was financially healing and getting stronger, but you, and you took it to a whole new level, and, and you brought a new level of, I think, understanding and rigor financially to the district, to help us not only save money where we could, but also develop new and expanding revenue streams. And so, you know, as you heard when we had to regretfully accept your resignation earlier, I think this month, last month, but you were leaving us in the healthiest of financial shape, and we're gonna continue to be challenged financially with this tax cap, but you've done such a tremendous job that, you know, every, every child, every parent, every community, community member owes you, you know, gratitude and debt for what you've done. Not debt.
Thank you so much.
You don't owe us the word debt, the gratitude for what you've done, so thank you.
I could not have done it without you guys.
Best of luck, best of luck as you go forward.
Thank you so much.
Make sure you do great things for your next job.
I'd like to move on to the business items. Can I get a motion to approve business items one through seven?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Can I get a motion to approve personnel actions eight through thirteen?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I have a question number eight.
Mm-hmm.
Do we need to update fingerprinting?
No, we have all of this, um, he was already a bus driver, so we have all of fingerprinting.
Oh, okay.
He's not a, he's a new bus driver, us, but not actually a new bus driver.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Anybody have a date? It's two, the next Tuesday.
It's the Monday after Thanksgiving. I have one, I'm sorry.
It's three weeks.
Is that three?
It is December fourth.
That's the educational meeting?
Yes, that's the eighteen.
December fourth?
Fourth is educational, eighteen is business.
Are we having one on the twenty-seventh?
I don't think so because that's a Monday? Because those parent-teacher conferences that Monday, Tuesday, right?
No.
Oh, well, that's, that's a Monday afterwards. You're right.
November, we have nothing else scheduled for the.
I'll second that.
All those in favor moving the committee reports to the December fourth meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? We do have one unfinished business item. There was a request to table this conversation until Tommy John could come. He is not here yet. I simply need to get the will of the board as to whether I'm going to pay this bill or not, so I can, we can table it again until December, or we can, I get the will of the board really quick.
Does that put, does that put you kind of, just put us in a difficult position to respond paying the bill? Are we going to be?
Pay the bill?
No?
I'm going to say that based on everything I read and everything that was submitted, I don't think we took advantage of this. I think perhaps that bill was on autopilot to be paid, and I would recommend that we don't pay it this year. And if it is something that someone really deeply wants to look into, or the superintendent thinks there's a need that we revisit that, but I don't think we were benefiting at all.
I second that. There was no contact with this organization. Nobody was benefiting directly. We've asked everybody. And so I, I agree with you, Stephanie.
Ed?
I do too.
Okay, so it looks like the motion on the floor is to not pay this bill until we hear otherwise.
That's my motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We can take the funds of which we expect to invest inside.
I brought a private one that I promised with a sleepover. Roll, roll, break.
Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Oh, so, oh, wait, wait, you're, you're public.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm so excited. Public, you put two.
The only one from the public here is our report. Do you want to cut off? Hop along? No?
Drop them like flies. All right. Thank you for the morning. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yes, I will.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion against.